Money cash, what a day. I owe it to you.
Hey, I subscribe to your YouTube page.
Huh?
I subscribe to your YouTube page.
Yeah. Oh, my YouTube is tick tock.
No, you got YouTube.
I got a YouTube.
You got a YouTube.
You didn't know you had a YouTube?
No. Big pocket of money. I bet he's on my box. Oh, yeah.
Paul got that. I seen him when he gave you some money out there. You see how he be doing?
Oh, you got that in the pool?
He gave you some money out there today.
Now, you gotta be looking like Donald Trump. January sixth. And he gonna, and he think he gonna get away with it, all his goons. They come back and get everybody in Flint. That's the whole deal about this. Forget the rest of y'all guys. He wanna get us in Flint with, with that preacher woman running around looking like Bozo here flying in the wind trying to get to the airport. Over there on the throttle roll. And you know, Jim Nat wanted anybody to erase all that tape when he was running.
No, it's still going. It's still going. You can talk and. He did. He did. Aw, man. Honey, that was true. Are you ready?
Yes.
What you do?
She told the tree.
Then put some on there. Just sit there and let me.
Are you gonna see Raven?
No.
Is it gone?
What is it?
Shit, not what it is. Well, that's how I feel too.
Huh? Tomato. That's what I guess.
Any green tomato?
Come pick some.
Oh.
I can't do many tomatoes.
Yeah, I can do that.
If you get some green tomato.
See, I like that.
What?
What? Just all the interaction.
I get three tomatoes. I'm probably.
Well, if he is, if, if, I didn't know he was gonna be here.
I didn't know I was gonna be here. And then I bought some peas.
Raven loves tomatoes. And I planted tomatoes for her today at the house.
But no, I'm saying I like that. You, you like, we gotta keep bringing Trevor because you smiled at us. You smiled at me, I'm with you.
Hey, if I don't have to bring one.
There we go.
That's my one. No, I brought that back to my.
Can you borrow one of my cats? Sit at my house. My cat's only down to let her cat leave those. My youngest decided to adopt a deaf cat. Yeah. And then my wife had a cat.
You didn't use any bring it on my herd?
Yeah, I actually. We had a cop come to the house because all my army gear was stolen from the apartment. Like someone dropped a gate at my door. Took my Xbox, my TV, all my army gear. So he comes into this police report. Great, a bridge attacking cop.
I went to real world, dog. They, they quick. They bite and scratch.
Yeah, they, they don't just use their.
Yeah, I'm sure. And I've seen him. Okay, really about a tax. Yeah, now they big bad, don't talk about. It'll be wolfish. Yeah, I'm sure.
So far, none of them cool. I've never seen you do that, sir. Looking, I've had the. And then I got one. Hit Sarah last year. And she was ordering bigger. She comes right up to him, starts snicking. He bats her nose without claws out. He doesn't think. And she goes, huh? And then she's like, what? And she tackles him and they became best friends.
Oh, okay.
Like, he didn't even push his back or nothing like that. Think.
What?
I mean, I raised him with a small.
Yeah, from the side.
Hey, did it? Hey, did it? This is dog. I'm gonna talk to you. What's the word? The one you gotta have? No. No, I gotta ask. Okay, I'll do that then.
Have all your friends peddle when you just pretend to.
Man, all my friends are sorry. I'll be the main one pedaling. Unless you're coming with me. I will make sure. We gonna have twins. I love you, darling.
And it gets your blood, and so it gets you drunker faster. Still, I'm still all my hair.
Yes, yeah.
I'm not supposed to. The VA, like, just still peddle. They rip me off all my hair. Even though it's like. They would be also looking flexible. My signature thing. So, like, it was rough, which was about fifty plus pounds on my back. Right now, I'm actually. So that was what I impressed. I fell off a mountain once or twice. And then the last straw was when I joined the National Guard. But we're in back of the line. And all the rest are. I see the pot. Most normal people. A whole pot. We're slow down. There's no number. Same speed, speeds up. It's a pot. So you got to fire, so. See where it's getting. The five inch gun and. And then you got. And then you're also in charge of. So if the ship starts rocking and it isn't strapped down. Especially, you know, this is nineteen seventy, nineteen eighty's. We, we, we don't have any seat that's in as we do now. So. There are certain things that need to be. So when they come in for inspection, they'll never say ready for inspection. Well, I mean, there's always several. They come in and you say standing by first. Because if you say ready, that means you believe everything is a hundred percent set up and they will go. You know, white, low, from floor to ceiling with the mangrove grass. Try and find. Yeah. As the show's here. Standing by.
This is my area. Dog, this ain't no eight ten media section over here.
Uh, what is that?
You know, man, how you gonna take my spot? What you just said? Man, hey, hey, let me, are you right back? Because they up here, they up here deboing and shit.
No, no, I do bribe you.
Uh, no, uh-uh, I ain't sitting down. Yeah, we, we now here Denise here too. Denise, we just. He gonna come up here. Devo my neck. Your brother. Don't come down here and devo my spot. Hey, hold on.
He's gonna post it in the chat.
Hold on.
Hey, you can send it. You just go to the website and pop, you know, control C, control B, and then put it into the chat.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, right, give me just a second, buddy. Let me shift around. I don't want. I learned, let me got struck by the next.
Man, you better hope I can get the whole thing, man, man. I'm gonna move your thing. Hey, it ain't no first come, first served in this mother. Hey, what's your name? What's your name?
See, it's telling you right there. You don't even know where that is.
Metcalf. Where Metcalf at? Hey, man, yeah, I'm telling y'all, man. This is what's in section, my ear. You ain't kick Paul out. You ain't kick Paul out, man. No. Where's Metcalf at? I don't know, I don't know who it's. Where's Metcalf at? I'm gonna chill. We ain't got Metcalf? We can't get Metcalf over here? Hey, I'm gonna see. What? What's up, baby? Hey, man. Hey, man, they over here trying to devo my area, man. They better.
What is this, man? We was all by long last week.
Man, listen, man.
Hey, we wanna be with the cool kids.
Over here trying to take over my area, man.
Yo, area, man.
Hold on. Y'all better, y'all better hope we pray. I'll tell you, that's my spot right there. This is my spot right here, I'm telling you. Let me see.
I'm just saying, I could beat you in a foot race. I don't have to worry about.
Oh, no, we don't want you back up here. We don't want you up here. No, no. You was all the way on the other end.
No, they'll put people out.
Oh, no, this is my spot right here. No, this is my spot right here. No, this is my spot right here. You gonna get put out, Denise.
You feel that your soul, don't you? You feel it, your soul, don't you? Like that, that icy.
This is just regarding your say, um, where it has all. Silence.
Hey, see? I know. Let me put my dude not disturb on, we good. I gotta plug me out.
It is by twenty-one September twenty. And I hereby call the stating of the Flint City Council Finance Committee to order. Roll call please. Mr. Mays. Ms. Lewis. Present.
Hey, you ain't inject this with no fingernail.
I'm an upper addict. Look at how much cocaine.
No, I'm not.
Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I want. Have a change. After resolution. I want to have a conversation with the finance director and Mr. Edwards. As it relates to. Ernst and Young, for me, uh, offer funds.
I can order that without objection.
Hello?
Next. There is an objection.
Also, I would say, uh, I would say that. As long as we have only five years of success, and since the grand remember. You know, it's even here to there. But I also want to, after resolution. Have a conversation. About the emergency purchases. If it relates to work. On the April six five. And that is after resolution.
Emergency purchase in accordance. I'll order that without objection.
Object.
Good for me.
Okay, is there a motion? Is there another additions or changes to the agenda?
One more matter.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
I want to see how we move it. If we did this period attack. With these evidence of. So I want to request this especially same place after resolution. If you were somehow to give the opposition an activity.
So that's discussion repairing the preparation for the audit.
Yeah, there's a question for the chairman.
And I will order that without objection. Okay, so that one, that item will be, um, without the passive discussion. So we have two, um, additions that we want, that we need to have a motion. That was the discussion, um, with Clyde and Mr. Moore regarding Harper and, um, Ernst and Young. So is there a motion for that?
No, there are.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor to add another discussion item after resolutions. To, or Clyde and Mr. Moore regarding Harper and Ernst and Young. Is there support?
Support.
Okay, this has been moved to Department of Superior to have a discussion. Um, and repeated again, so, uh, roll call. Roll call, excuse me, discussion.
Right here.
Um, yes, this Louis.
I would like to put a motion on the floor to suspend, um, use of the majority.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
I want the motion on the floor to vote in sequence.
Okay, um, I don't know.
That's, that's conflicting motion. She don't know the rule.
I'm gonna check with that.
This conflicting motion.
Mr. Attorney, city attorney. Is that a question? Um, there's a motion, there's been a motion made in the middle of a discussion to vote in sequence. Um, immediately, with no discussion on agenda changes. Is that allowed at this point in the agenda since we have a motion on the floor and it's the second?
I don't know if there's, was it a motion? There's a motion, it's called a question that could be made, but. I'm not familiar with these calls for a vote in sequence.
I think it, it's actually, um, limits debate. It's a motion to limit debate.
It's the same.
It's conflicting motion. Can't do it.
So there's been a motion made to limit debate. On the agenda changes. I know it's okay prior to that, I think.
So that's rule seventeen.
Okay, so that would be in order.
Say what?
My feeling on that.
What's he say? I can see anything that specifies.
I have a long time, please turn.
It's seventeen point three.
Okay.
Says emotionally limit or extend the date is not in the debate.
Okay, thank you very much. Then that, that motion is in order. So is there a second?
There's not.
To, um, can you give me a sequence for any agenda changes?
Support.
Okay, it's been moved to Department of Superior, so roll call vote please, ma'am. Mr. Mays.
No.
Is moved?
Yes. Yes.
Mr. Murphy, yes.
Yes.
Yes. Man, get it. Sorry about the smartest people I've ever known in my life.
Four, yes, two, no? Four, yes, two, no, the motion fails. Go ahead, we have discussion on the, um, agenda change. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, I would.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Do you, Mr. Edwards, back to the plan, um, director, can you approach? Mr. Edwards, while y'all approaching, I'm gonna say for the record. I don't believe, um, the way that I'm seeing some of my colleagues vote in this discussion will happen after resolutions. I'm gonna walk my way through it now, put a record under the way that we. I'm trying to, and we shouldn't have to. You know, tight walk rules and the finances permitted be. Uh, have you had any luck with Ernst and Young? Don't look like they're here today. Must be responsive to any thought and to try and resist.
Yeah, yes, your, our, the chairs are. Councilman Mays, yes, the sentiments and requests have been properly communicated with, um, Ernst and Young.
What is your, uh, please, uh, excuse me, you're up to a council meeting?
I think that, uh, to the best of my knowledge, I believe they don't understand. Uh, what it is that they're being summoned to do. They are unclear what they're supposed to come here to do.
Now, they come here for a billion or so dollars to help us with compliance. And sometimes there's this common sense that if we're on our budget of money and we control the purse. If we have questions on compliance, each resolution reports that we have to hold on even today says subject to compliance. So common sense to me, maybe not to everybody else says if we're in a working process to allocate these dollars. There's nothing wrong with having the compliance term here. If we allocate these money, so they're being summoned to do a job that they've been contracted to do. Now, are they meeting and talking with you or the administration, do you know? Have you met with Mr. Finance Director?
I have not. I really don't have the staff box in or referred to any of the bases.
You guys are my point is that talking to staff and the administration. Um, we want to remain tied to this project. They don't understand what they're being summoned to do. That's what I'm hearing you say. Tell them I said that you're being summoned to prepare the contract with this council, with this city on the council side. In order to help us with compliance if we try to create a way to reach projects. Can you remember that, or should I shorten it up?
Uh, uh, no, council may, we don't.
Okay, um. I don't see, I, I can see the clock here. It's about two minutes left. You know, I don't think this council, particularly the ones that don't even want to discuss it, if the finance committee be. Don't want to discuss our funds, don't want to discuss why it's so young, can't show up. I don't believe I can count five votes here today to summon them and subpoena them. But I will try to get that done. If they don't know why they're being asked to come, come and find out. That's what they should do, come and find out. And this council should have another prayer of law among their staff. In order to have a working session. As it relates to the allocation of our funds. Mr. Finance Director, do you know how much money is left in our funds today? Uh, estimate. I can estimate it. I want to see what you say.
I would hesitate to estimate. Uh, I've been looking at the report by, help over, is already, help over. You said the confidence.
If you remember five ninety, the dead's wings to try to have an estimate. I'm gonna estimate somewhere between thirty and sixty digits.
That, that's it.
You think that's pretty fair estimate? You know it's got a wide range. So I'm gonna say, you know, we want votes to come and talk about thirty million. Does he think that's a fair request?
Yes, as far as I understand it, yes.
Okay, do we have a contact number for Ernst and Young?
I'm sure we do, uh.
Can you get that contact number to the city clerk and I'm gonna call who he put this that? Yeah, how about that? How about, how about that?
Thank you, Mr. Murphy.
Well, I asked how about that before the council went out and he don't want to answer.
I'll let him answer.
I'll call him back for five minutes.
That shouldn't be a problem.
Get that down to the clerk.
Correct.
When you get that down, but they can give it to me.
Is there another discussion? I agree, um, Mr. Murphy first.
Nice move.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to subpoena. Um, Ernst and Young. To appear before council. Is there support?
I'm sure.
Yes.
I second that motion.
Okay, it's been moved to Department of Superior seconded. Um, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy first and then Mr. Mays.
There's no way we ought to be paying someone a million dollars and, um, there's been several attempts to, um. Request for them to come before city council. And they have not appeared before city council. Between administration and whoever need to have reached out to them and brought them here. Um, I, I think they want to do service to us as a body, to this community. To not come, because we is a government. And regardless of if they want to hear from us or not, or answer our questions. They have responsibility as a contract over, uh, the consultant over our offer dollars to come. And, um, clear up or answer any unanswered questions that we may need. And for them to not have appeared before this council, probably they don't care. And for them to not have appeared before this council, probably they don't have, probably three or four times this state, we gave them a contract, it's unacceptable. So, um, at this point in time, putting in the words or requests for them to come is not, um, this is not, it's not working. So, um, we, we have no other choice at this point in time. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Mace?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I don't want to take away from any of my colleagues' time, and I want to kind of see if the terms of catch on, what we are talking about, what this motion is about, but really what I'm saying is, I'm tempted to make a amendment to the motion that if indeed we bring up here to have in a special meeting, all with them, and a discussion of our funds, I'm not gonna do it right now, because when a motion is made about distracting our rules, the council president gets too fat and crunk. The rest of it's be some guy, where the finance turn off procedure. So I take it out of minute in this first round. I might do an amendment, see if that amendment gets supported. Um, but for right now, you know, I'm good in the first round, I'll be both as a parent. But the time, where I should be making it, I'll make, I'll be there to see what happens with that. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mace, is there any other discussion? Mr. Biker?
Do you, to, uh, Mr. Edwards? Mr. Edwards, um, when we first started allocating our funds, we used to get this confirmation from Ernst &amp; Young prior to coming to the floor that it was acceptable to approve for funding. Now, we're getting a statement saying if it's approved by them, then the, then it'll be allocated. So, because we vote as a body, does Ernst &amp; Young have the ability to overthrow our vote?
No, they don't.
So, so why did the process change? And we now are getting confirmation, at least this body is getting confirmation after we already voted on a resolution for our funds? And I'm leaning towards supporting the subpoena, because it doesn't seem like we're getting the support we need from Ernst &amp; Young. So, that's what I'm trying to ask, why did the process change?
I get, uh, Chairman to, Councilman Biker, I guess I need clarification. Could you, you know, clarify what exactly, we were talking about, what has changed?
So, we used to get the emails or some other verification from, um, Mr. Jarzinski, saying that these funds are, were to be approved per the treasury rules. But now, we don't get that, we get a statement, um, that says that's resolved, the city officials, blah, 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 blah. Before this funds are spent, the city, our administration compliance and implementation shall review the compliance, or so they'll view that they're acceptable to be spent. So why is that happening after the fact? Instead of, we get confirmation before the fact, before we know that we're voting on something that can be approved?
Is that, my apologies, is that?
Do you understand what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do. But my question to you would be, is that language in the, it is resolved portion of the resolution?
Yes.
Okay, because typically they have been, that have not been, that have not been the case.
Yeah, I know, because what we also, because it wasn't there, we got confirmation from Ernst &amp; Young that the funds were approved. And we don't want to get that, we just get this statement. So are they approving funds before we get a resolution, or why don't we get confirmation of that?
I think that's my, 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 my best understanding, I usually go through these, I didn't catch that in particular thing. But, uh, my best understanding is always that it is vetted through them prior to a committee, council. We have an understanding that that's the appropriate use, and meets the criteria, and it meets the plan as it was approved. That's, that's always been the case, that still is the case. I'm not sure why that particular piece of language ended up in that resolution. Which resolution is it?
Um, two three zero, two five, two point one is the law I'm reading, but I believe it's standing all the time. It's in every article, documentation that we have.
I believe, I believe that the person that composed those, um, adjusted the pose of the, the full appropriate language.
Because Ernst &amp; Young used to be here when we, when we had our resolutions on the agenda. And whether or not we have written verification or verbal, when we'd ask him on the record, whether or not they were approved, and all of that in a way. So right now, this body has no data that any of these are approved.
None, as I, as I spoke before, nothing's changed about, uh, the, the administration's procedure about having, um, in line with that, that information prior to arrival to council. I believe that the person that was composing that section did put in, they copied from some other place, but they didn't put in the right language.
So between you, Mr. Evans, do you look into that and try to resolve that?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Any other discussion? Madam Chair. Go ahead.
Mr. Edwards. So my, my only concern, and I'm not copying the things that he would not have support on this, but my only concern with this is that it's been asked several times for them to come before us, and they've not come. Um, and I wish they'd not have to come to, me, subpoena. But if, at this point, you've been asked several times for them to come, and we haven't seen them yet, and they say there's no problem, and they need to know why, I just, it, it, it's rather concerning that, again, something that we all have say in, that co-equal members are making decisions, and, and they won't come before us, and we're not given a good reason as to why. Um, and so, I feel like we're at a point now, unfortunately, where I will have to support this subpoena, because they have not come before us. If, I, I don't know if maybe you can get them on the phone before we vote for them to just say they will come without any subpoena? I don't know what the answer is, but at this point, they do need to come before us.
Any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Evening, Mr. Edwards. Um, I would be supportive of subpoena. One, because the process is not being transparent. Two, I asked for an email, and I sent it perfectly to the city attorney for our applications to approve. They should, I felt, been in our package, if it's something that Ernst &amp; Young approved, we should have had one third, who was, like they did on the spreadsheet, and issued. Because there were some things that were missing, Cyrus Park wasn't in there. And that was approved to give to every good engagement hub. And so I wanted to know, would that Ernst &amp; Young prove that? And then we find out that that entire resolution was asked by the administration to be removed. So it's not transparent, which is my issue. One was, we had, you know, our funds are being, um, given to, to, uh, nonprofit. Because we have a nonprofit here that was given, and we didn't know that it was a council member. So that, and I have a problem with that, because if, if Ernst &amp; Young is doing, we should have access. We have a twelve-person member body that's in meeting, and we have no notes on what they met. Nobody knows how they came to the conclusion, how they approved anything, what was their process. There is nothing. Madam Clerk, have you received, do you, Madam Chair, and Madam Clerk, have you received anything from the twelve-person audit committee as of yet?
I have not.
Um, Madam Chair, have you, Clerk, have you, I had sent the request for the copy of the applications that were approved. Have you received anything from Ernst &amp; Young or this administration?
Not, since you requested it, no, but we never passed. But it was just a short report, or the, and, um, checking the first check, like the first hundred, so that's all I ever got from Ernst &amp; Young. Seven months ago.
Okay, so here's the problem, Mr. Edwards. We have really gotten shafted on this, and this is a problem. Because this money is coming in, you're saying it's spent, it's thirty million, it's fifty million, and Ernst &amp; Young has been asked, I would say, six months, at least six months to come. And we have gotten the, the old will shuffle. You know, we've asked them, they haven't shown, I didn't find Ernst, I don't even think it's Ernst &amp; Young. I didn't find him to be a person that would not come, I did not. I found him to be very transparent, when he, he came before. But when I'm asking for these applications, I need him to bring these approved applications. Because we need to know how they got approved. You had applications that people asked for one hundred and fifty thousand, but then somebody gave them two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Did Ernst &amp; Young approve the one fifty, or did they approve the two twenty-five? How you submit an application online or dot around, and then you get more than what you submitted for? That's a problem. That is a problem. And Ernst &amp; Young, you know, they're gonna leverage funds, they're a million-dollar company, you gotta trust. It was the greatest sales pitch ever, to get nothing. And I don't think it was them, I think it was this administration holding back and tying their hands. I truly believe that. And so I want to see the applications of the approved one, we need to see the companies or the nonprofits that weren't approved, because the meetings, the meetings were meant in secret. How y'all did this was very skillful. We will put it out, and then once they approve, we won't tell nobody when the meetings are occurred. They've already completed all of their meetings. Who, who approved them to get stipend? Because I asked you at two meetings, you didn't know if they got a stipend, it was on the city website. They received five hundred dollar stipend for making these recommendations. According to our charter page five, it states what a multi-member body is, page fifty-six, fifty-seven, and fifty-eight goes to further detail. And so we live with a multi-member body, it's the same as our, um, citywide advisory board, they make the recommendation. Um, with our planning, commission, and zoning, they make the recommendation. All of those boards are multi-member body boards that made decisions, and those, they come before resolutions to council. In this process, we may also light our city charter on fire, because it is not being followed. I will be supporting to have Ernst &amp; Young here, they need to be subpoenaed, I want them application, all of the application. I want to see, and I want to see Cyrus Park too, because this, I don't know how that got through, and it wasn't disclosed. I want to see it all, Mr. Edwards. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Any other discussion in the first round? See no movement, discussion in the second round? Any discussion in the second round? See none?
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Mr. Edwards, again, do you, to, Mr. Edwards, I don't know if you can get someone on the phone, because I know we're all probably, a few of us aren't gonna take our five minutes, but if we can avoid this subpoena, please let's do that. Madam Chair?
Yes.
I'm gonna be very clear. Yes, I'm gonna be very, I don't want a phone call, I want a subpoena. We didn't get the phone call in the Okeydoke, and we've been sitting here for six months. No phone call's gonna suffice, we're not kindly doing it anymore. That didn't work. For six months, they have been absent. Nobody being nice anymore. These millions of dollars have been allocated and given, rolled up and bundled into other nonprofits. No, they don't be no nice anymore. Get Ernst &amp; Young here, get the applications here, all of them. We got people saying they submitted, and they, they were declined. Okay, well, let's see what those numbers are, what did Ernst &amp; Young say, why they declined? I want to see Ernst &amp; Young saying, hey, we like this organization so much, let's give them another fifty thousand dollars. I want to see that. I want to see that, if not, we need to go to court or something, because this stuff is a mess. Ninety-four point seven million dollars came to this community, and we got things sitting up in here who was in the second ward, who, her ceiling was falling, she's sleeping in her car. We have to make sure we can make accommodations for people who can't get our funds, who need insurance. So, I'm not being nice, I've been courteous, I'm like, my residents want results. We're not asking anymore. I don't, don't give no five-minute phone call, no. No, they need to be subpoenaed, they need to be here, because if we got to answer to our residents, Ernst &amp; Young needs to answer to this body. We were all elected. We were elected, we have, we shouldn't have been at this point, that's the sad part. If this administration had to follow the charter, a multi-member body is anybody of one or more members. Anytime you have a multi-member body, it comes to the, the city council by resolution orders, that didn't happen. You got twelve people picked, because we didn't pick any of them people on there. We, we don't even told them their meeting, it's a violation of the Open Meetings Act, because it wasn't the place where the public could attend. You had meetings where a, a veteran has served his country, but he couldn't sit in a meeting to find out what ninety-four point seven million dollars was gonna be allocated. For meeting in secrecy. So Ernst &amp; Young needs to be here, they, okay, with this twelve multi-member body to give recommendations, which members on this body said, well, they're just giving recommendations. That's the same function that the citywide advisory, it's the same as the ethics board that only give advisory. It's the same as the zoning and planning board. It's the same as every multi-member body do is give recommendation. But this group has got a hold to ninety-four point seven million dollars, and they don't have to come before this body. That's not what we do. And if we have a resolution that saves with the water department, and they have, and one of the contractors needs more money, it comes before us with a change, first with a resolution, secondly with a change order that they're gonna need more money, and then we vote on it. That's been the process. That has not been the process with this ninety-four point seven million dollars. It is not transparent, it is unethical, it is illegal, and it's not, it's a problem. How do you give another company or nonprofit more money than they asked for? What compliance firm is gonna do that? That hasn't been here at least six months. Now, I will be supporting this. No phone call, get the subpoena. And if anybody who is not going to get the subpoena, then they are not going to support the residents, in my opinion. Because it's time to stop playing around. This money has to be allocated, and it has to be suspended. And we, that clock is running out of time. And this is a problem, because people still want to know where this money has been, or said where it's going. Ain't no thing like subpoena, because if we don't have time, they don't show up, that's gonna take a whole nother three, four, five, six months. No, subpoena. And if anybody is not supporting subpoena in the end here, then they're not supporting a transparent and fair allocation, in my opinion, of the ninety-four point seven million dollar our funds that was given to this city by the Department of Treasury because of COVID-19. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Go ahead, Mr. Mace.
Yeah, Madam Chair. Mr. Edwards, I'm like, you know, they might charge you back up, but you're showing me, you're behind, you're, and I really want to talk to the council. I'm listening to what's being said. I can't breathe, Mr. Pride. Mr. Murphy made the motion, I hear what Mr. Jack said. And I heard this right, and I don't want to do, I'm also in favor of the motion, but I got a page, I'm made with a chart. One, should it be a best of date here that proceeded, like, best of years? In case we don't get a form. Two, should it be a special grant, or should it be an expensive fee, uh, one to tie? Once we get to that date and point. Um, I'm kind of wanting to be, place, special fee, and best of date here, whatever, kind of nation, because, you know, I don't need documentation as well as the person here to subpoena, to subpoena the person than documentation. Would be, for example, Mr. Edwards, if I want to ask Ernst &amp; Young, do we have to put stipulations that people who are out of deals and property tax have to be paid? do we have to put stipulations that people who are out of deals and property tax have to be paid? I wanna be able to ask them, for example, just enough. It's a lot of questions we need in these working sessions with Ernst Young, uh, in order to applicate this by trial. This is a serious matter for me, and the object is to best serve the residents. We rarely get this type of money to help cities make and its residents. And it needs to really be done right. So even though there'll be a different degree of interest and passion from the various council people, the object is to best serve the residents. Uh, right now, I know of a situation where uh, uh, several, like, three pieces. Houses, customers' name, water order. And for the last two days, we gotta figure out technically how to help. Our job, what is through, finance side, do our meditation, clean up, and pay, put, whether it's police service. Our job is to have the assistance to make decisions to best serve the residents. Now, when we subpoena, or vote to subpoena, we have to have a view, a place, day, and time. And we have to have a game. Uh, with a minute and forty-one seconds, and then the end, we'll get rid of the damn thing. I want to thank some people, this is Jack, but I'm thinking that. I hope, maybe, if we can, to the motion that you set a time, date, and place as we come up with a procedure hearing, and for a special meeting based upon council rules. So if then it'll simply be in all means necessary to effect these stipulations and carry out the subpoena, and I so.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to do all, excuse me, I'm trying. Make sure I get this. To do all things necessary to, to eventually this, the, um, subpoena. I just wanna make sure I got it right, okay? Is there support? Probably second here. Um, any discussion? Go ahead, Ms. Everett.
So, um, to my colleague, the first board, um, just put together this, um, draft resolution to submit to the meeting. And I, um, forward it to her. But in the resolution that I just put together, forward the subpoena, it states, the resolution should do all things necessary to subpoena Ernst Young consultant to appear for, good city council to answer any and all questions concerning the office costs allocated to the city. I'm staying, I'm staying, whereas the good city charter in section three, one oh one states the legislative power of the good city council to best, and a city council has the powers and duties provided by law or this charter, including enactment of ordinance and resolutions, enactment and monitoring of the budget investigation, and monitoring of affairs of the city, and ensuring qualified and effective management of the financial position. It is resolved that so many city officials and city councils do all things necessary to make the necessary arrangements to work together to create and implement a meeting for a special order. So, that kind of brings in, do all things necessary, and also, um, speak for us, whether we implemented a special meeting or a special order to bring them in. And, um, I'm sure the venue goes, um, tears up and re-born over again when I, um, give it to her, but this is just a rough draft for her to have something to go with. If that's, okay, or do you feel like it needs to be added, what you just, um, did?
Point of information, did you include that was, because we're, we're discussing subpoenas, did you put subpoena in there?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Resolution to do all things necessary to subpoena Ernst Young.
Request for information. Are you asking me if that a good start? The answer would be yes, and I'll, if we all can take this seriously and get it done and get the resolution together, I mean, this is what we're supposed to do. This is the right manner of my answer. You know, getting up to a good start here is the, my request for information is, uh, uh, do you believe that we understand that? And if that's your question, then the answer is yes.
So, um, yeah, real, yeah, so I just want to make sure we on the same page.
Right, I know, with that, it's, it's a good question.
I, I, I'll forward this to the venue, so she can tear it up. And we write it over.
Request for information.
What, what's your request?
I would request that you forward it to everybody, if you have a problem with that.
Uh, I kinda got a problem with it, because I think I need to change the word, and I ain't ready to, uh, have y'all looking at some of my interpretations of the labels.
Request that you, and that's the meaning, do what you want to outline. Yeah. And made it to everybody, I am sure.
Yeah, yeah, sure. Sure, but this is something, because usually when we put a motion up the floor to do something like this, it need to be put in writing so to be appropriate and do the right thing. I'm at least giving her a draft of, you know, what it looks like, and then based on what you're saying, this kinda covering, um, the things that you're asking to do, which we don't really know, we don't know what they scheduled this, but just get the ball rolling.
And my request for information, hopefully by Monday, so we can take action on a resolution. Time, right?
Let's do that.
Is that all right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm done.
Okay, any other discussion?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mrs. Lewis.
Um, so, I feel, uh, I get neutral about this, because I understand why Ernst Young wanted me here, because the behavior of this council can get very volatile. And I definitely understand why they're going to come. And so I'm not in favor of subpoenaing them, because that sounds like we are making an issue of hostile situations. I get it, this is the record of the council. However, I'm totally in favor of the council to read the question and receive an immediate answer. And so, and also keep in mind that since they are an out-of-time partner, we're getting retired by the minute. So my question is, um, is this, is, will that also be worth it? Because they were coming out of town.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Through you two to speak, are you aware that, um, when we, appropriate times, I think that they want to have office space?
So, thank you for the, so, thank you very much, okay. So, seeing that they do not have the office space, if they have a question, uh, since they cannot go to the office space, will we be charged for them to come here? But I also have a question for, uh, for our Madam Clerk. So, being that we have the new chamber, do we have the capability to lie in, in the new chamber? Okay, thank you, thank you. So, um, I don't wanna get this confused, because, um, as we talked about the allocation of the dollars in addition to, um, to Ernst Young. Uh, one thing that council has this time, we have the ability to spend this money. So unfortunately, as our colleagues continue to say, that people have needs and not able to fill, well, certain colleagues are voting to pass the money, so needs to be fulfilled. We don't have lawsuits with the, with the, against the city. We are actively, aggressively, um, uh, attempting to spend this money. But not just that, we can do all, we can do to do buildings. We hold a perjury, as the colleagues continue to say. So, we have the ability to vote, so my question is, for those that are, um, that are, um, waving their claim, the question is, are they voting on behalf of the people? I know I've been voting on behalf of them.
No, no.
I also know I've been doing my contributions on behalf of the people. So, we have to be careful when we say those things. We have to ask ourselves, are we doing all things necessary? Back in general, back in general, excuse me, we received the legal opinion from, um, the city attorney stating that that was not a multi-member body. It is almost October. It is almost October. We will be holding up this money that must be allocated by twenty twenty-four. So, and also we have colleagues, um, talking about the allocation of funds, and I heard Star Park again. The point is, different nonprofits are working with other nonprofits to get things done across the city. Everyone has got opportunity to do the same thing. Whether they did or did not, that has no, no bearing when we're going on. I know that the Star Park Network is so shaky, they work in tandem with the Network Engagement Hub, with, with presenting, giving funding up with the emergency plan. They've been working on that for months, at their, their own meetings. And so, we can't fault Star Park for collaborating with the Network Engagement Hub to make that happen, to do something better than amazing for the second ward. Don't shame people for doing the work. But, again, um, in terms of Ernst Young coming, we definitely, if this council has questions for Ernst Young, we should definitely have a question answered. But we definitely need to be careful, and we need to really, um, look at the situation that we're trying to bring them into. If I was outside coming, I wouldn't come, because any time they did come, they sat back there for hours. Time and money wasted. And so when they come again, you can also see the temperature of the last meeting, we didn't get a lot of things done. And so, do they wanna come into a volatile environment? Definitely, unfortunately, that was asked, but at the end of the day, we probably do our answers. So, that's what I'm gonna do five minutes later about. Thanks, Madam Chair.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'll take a few minutes for my own self in this round. Um, I have requested multiple times the score sheets. I had suggested that Ernst Young sign off on each resolution. And, um, I believe that the administration wants us as dark, gives us dark, not knowing what's going on. Because the administration wants us not to know what's going on, they wanna keep it a secret. I, they, they're very secretive, they're not going to share the information. And, you know, I, I, I find that very problematic. And although the mayor isn't necessarily tied to the recommendations of the committee, by not sharing that information, we don't know what those recommendations were. And frankly, I'm gonna listen to what those recommendations were, because they were a community committee. They were made for residents. And if they didn't apply the funds, and yes, I, I know that we approved, um, several resolutions of, for grants that were not the amount of money that was, um, that was applied for. Because we do have that listing of the applications. And my understanding is that the ones in yellow are the ones that they approved. But we have no reasons why they approved that one versus the Good Church, is that the one, Ms. Grace? Why they weren't approved, we don't know why.
Request for information. Um, you said you had the whole, the time to restore the report, and you weren't able to
And not, not the report, I wanted the results.
You want the results of the final, of the meeting.
Right.
And you weren't able to get that.
I have not gotten that.
Okay, thank you.
So, I have more problems with that from the administration than I do with Ernst Young. Um, Ernst Young and their initial bid, if we think about it, all the things that they bid on, the administration didn't do. There's no reason for them to have a conference here. Because we're shoveling money out, we're, uh, we're distributing it to nonprofits who are responsible or recording. There's, the reason that they were going to have, have people here was to look over the employees and all that. There's no need for that, because we are doing that. Um, we're, we're dedicated to that minute detail for the city. So, it's also not, we talk about being a million-dollar firm, we haven't paid them the million dollars yet. And it's been two years, because we're paying by the hour. So, that's another option, thing to, I mean, an option, but something to think about. But the big thing to me isn't necessarily Ernst Young coming before us, but getting the administration to answer our questions.
Request for information.
Go ahead, Ms. Grace.
That's where I want to be, all of these, just serious, with me, I'm saying, I'm speaking out of that fact that through the resolution, we have all that, first, to the language, with me, to get back to the city, young, and all the people. That's where we need the administration, I hope, and I'm glad to inform them, I hope you are in the center.
I think that we need to subpoena the, um, the results more than anything else. I don't necessarily agree with subpoenaing, subpoenaing the, um, Ernst Young. I do think that we need information from the administration. And what concerns me is that in the state budget, they requires, it requires us to have the money obligated by December thirty-first of this year. We don't have a lot of time. If we allocate that money by this year, remember the feds have us obligating them by next year, by next December thirty-first. But the state says that if you allocate those funds by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-three, we're gonna give you an extra percent in your, in your, um, revenue sharing dollars. And that's not an insignificant amount, you know, several hundred thousand dollars, tax million plus, probably. I don't know the exact number, and I don't think the city knows the exact number, number at this time. But this is something, there's all, it's been, I've been working on in the background, and not coming forward, because I don't have any answers, and I don't believe that I should come, I, I need to have definitive answers when I come before you, so that I can answer your questions. But this, I agree, I'm cut up with it, like everybody else. Totally cut up. And although I don't agree with subpoenaing, subpoenaing, oh, whatever. I can't say that for some reason today. We're issuing this subpoena to Ernst Young. I am willing to go to court to get that, um, the recommendations from the committee. All right, seeing that is, that is my time for another discussion, right? So this is to do all things, this motion is to do, is amended, to do all things necessary to effectuate this subpoena. Roll call, Madam Clerk. Ms. Lewis.
No.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Ms. Grace Lee?
No.
Ms. Murphy, Harvard?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
No.
Wow. Wow.
Yes.
Wow. Wow.
The voters by test, we know that motion passes. Now, going back to the motion to subpoena Ernst Young.
One vote.
Go ahead.
With the amendment that passed, that will be the prison motion, not the thing. If we have failed, then we will retract.
You are correct, Ms. Mays, thank you very much. We're back to the discussion. Um, we're flying Mr. Moore regarding Ernst Young attendance at ARPA. Um, the only person who's discussed this is Mr. Mays. Are we going?
Very well.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
Well, we on.
We're still in the agenda change. This is the discussion to, um, regarding Ernst &amp; Young attendance. Discuss ARPA. Do you want to?
If I may, right now, I believe if they don't, um, and we don't take time on it, by my duty to move forward, um, this would be the discussion at the end of the meeting. I would like to withdraw that request because we just done that, you know?
Yeah, Mr. Pyke, would you like to withdraw your second?
And so, I will draw my most, if I can, second, and withdraw.
Yeah, I don't know who you can withdraw, because we already have a lot of speed.
Okay.
I don't know where to speed.
I could let it fail.
We can vote, we can vote for that thing.
I'm not controlled, they do the same thing over. This is our role.
That works.
I want two seconds.
Okay, go ahead, Mr.
All right, um, Madam Chair, through you to the city clerk. Um, Madam Clerk, I'd like to put in a referral to the finance department to get all of her's to the young's voices. And that's, that's a time to your hand.
Any other discussions sitting in the room? You can go ahead and, Mr. Murphy?
So, um, I, I, I hear what you brought up with the committee, um, recommendation. My, my, my thing, um, as a councilperson is, we weren't even part of the selecting of the committee, so we were just, we knew that our, everything. We didn't know that a committee, you know, this process with Ernst &amp; Young is not what I thought it was going to be. Already had a lot of million dollars. But to create a, um, outside, um, ad hoc committee to look at something that we should have been looking at, the application should have came to us. We should have worked committee, and we should have been the ones who were at the application. Just like those one pages we had when people was coming to our town office, that we just wanted to get general idea. We should have been looking at the applications and making our recommendations, working with the, um, mayor administration on for the dollars. But somehow, you had the foundations and other people came in and intercepted the process. And next thing you know, we didn't have no say so on nothing until now we getting resolutions coming to us about fifty thousand, um, this, like, fifty thousand for this group, two hundred and twenty-five thousand, and we piece in it, and we cherry pick it. Who would want to get our dollars for? And the, those who've been waiting for a long time to, um, see if they can even apply for offer dollars, still ain't even been eligible to apply because even when the application process came out, it was only for nonprofit organizations.
Right.
So, what about the mom's house for nine years? Or, um, the tire shop right there on Stewart and Zack and all, where when, um, the, um, COVID hit and they shut down people, he lost money.
Yeah.
And he wanted to try to apply for some funds to help his shortfall. But there's no way, or it wasn't a process for him to even be able to apply. Then you got people that then applied, like Good Church and other, um, folks, the, the, um, tiny homes that they get ready to build and the circle. I mean, just a lot of different organizations that apply for funding that have not earned anything. And even if you want to go give them our money, send them whatever, be like, we are informing you that unfortunately, you won't be getting five dollars. But yet, it's still, I'm concerned, and I'm not sure if it's true or not, that we have funded an organization that didn't even apply.
Uh-oh.
So, if we funded somebody that didn't even apply and went through the process, that's a problem. So, if we funded them and they didn't apply, then what happened to? I mean, this, this, this grew up, in my opinion. So, I know it's an uncomfortable topic to talk about for, uh, subpoena, subpoena the, um, committee that made recommendations, right? No man too, but the, um, um, Ernst &amp; Young. Oh, so, I'm, I'm just.
No, I'm questioning.
I'm just, I'm wrong, I put four minutes on.
Roll out.
You know, there are forty-five seconds left.
Talk, question.
I'm just saying, if that's the case, you know, and from my understanding, the funding that they got to buy these, that was not coming to city. They can't give compensation that gave them the funding, that wasn't proper or something. And I don't have a problem with that. I just think that we got stripped our powers as the council to make our recommendations, to do what we want to do. And I believe the application should have came to us. The application would have came to us, maybe you could have got some subway and, um, all day working session and started from the morning of, with these applications, um, retarded by the morning.
Go ahead, that one. There go my question.
Um, so, um, I definitely want to give comments to my colleague in the third board. And I just want to do a few things. So, when, when the ad hoc committee, when we were, uh, when we were meeting, we made sure that we listened to the community. The one thing that the community still say is this is our money, this is the community's money. And so, we would be remiss not to include the community, the community in the suggestion of the allocation for this money. So, and objective ad hoc committee was formed. We went through a totally blind, objective, objective process where all appointments were rejected. We gave the opportunity for every single resident in the city to apply. What, what?
Point of information.
Julia.
What's your point?
Through you to the speaker, are you aware that even with that objective, um, group of, um, residents that was part of the ad hoc committee, it never even was brought to our attention that it was being created? And we needed to then, so I hear what you're saying. But we wasn't even part of that objective selective appointment to be able to object. We had to be, uh, and we was not part of that, so I just want to be.
I'm sure, but that's why it was objective, because you didn't have it. That's what makes it objective. Because especially if you don't have a specific group that is redacted, you're giving it, you, you don't have council people to select the people, select the people that they want to serve us, maybe. You're giving it because different here. When I, when I said select, when I select somebody for a board in the city, it's because I know, I interfaced with them or they reached out to me. And so, this message went out across the entire city, saying if you would like to participate and represent your ward, if you would like to participate, represent your ward, apply for this race. You wanted to take away the subjectivity of the board. You wanted to make sure that the home, that the friends, that the family, that the loved ones were on the board. And everyone in the second ward, everyone in the third ward that wanted to apply, had the opportunity to apply. And they were not, not selected because who they did not know. That was the point of that, um, of that objective selection committee. So, that was the opportunity for the community to come and give their opinion of where this money should go. Now, where the ball is dropped right now is we are supposed to have before us the selection committee information, okay? And, and who they specifically selected, as well as we're supposed to have the administration ideas before us. And so, as we look at what the, so what the community said, because again, you want to save the community money, right? So, we want to have their suggestions before us, want to have what the administration thought the money, where the money should go. And then, we are, we are last, we are the decision maker, we are the first ring bearer. So, then, that's where we take all of the data combined and we make that final decision. That's what's supposed to be happening right now. That was not happening right now. And so, we just need to make that clear. I don't want to, um, demonize that community because they worked hard.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Through you to the speaker, where is the recommendation?
And that is what Ms. Murphy was saying, that's the problem. And so, if we had everything that she needed before us, in front of us, then we can make the decision in this facility. But right now, the way that it's going, the administration, they're sending down their resolution, and we have the opportunity to vote them up or vote them down, to do our own, do something on our own. And so, the way it's supposed to be, we're supposed to be looking at everyone's recommendation to be.
Point of information.
What's your point?
Through you to the speaker, the resolution to present the administration is sent in as these two recommendations of the committee. Now, are you?
That's my point, we don't have it before. And if you don't have it before you, then you do not know. And so, that's how this process should be going at this point, at this government. But we have to see. We can throw away everyone's recommendation, this body, we can ball it up real well. And we can do our own thing if we choose. So, let's not put the fault on anyone, because we have an absolute final sentence. So, if you don't like, if you don't want to, uh, the community.
Point of information. Unless the mayor vetoed it, and then they all fight with majority council, and is that true?
In one nature, that's how I'm in law. And so, we don't have to fight with, uh, with the, what the community says. But we should at least have listened to the community, these are their allocations. We can throw everything that administration said out the window, everything that the community said out the window, and we can make the decision. So, let's not act like we're.
Point of information. What's your point? So, with that being said, what you're saying, Councilwoman Lewis, why are we voting to approve offer resolutions? Why are we voting to approve any of it?
We're voting to approve it so we can get money from the community. Now, we are, but the point is, it's all about methods. I mean, guys, we, we can play games we want to, the point is, it's all about the methods. And the methods that the administration is used to do this, um, it is not the best method, that's the point. And so, we have a common call, we complain, or if you work, it's totally up to us. Thank you.
Thank you, any other discussion? Uh, yes, that's not Ms. Murphy's.
Thank you. Um, the process of how this is, how I'll correct you, Julie, I can start over. Would you thank you for being transparent and stating you did not get information? I know there were a couple times you said you asked, and we have changed, if I see a vote, I think it's a legitimate problem. It's true, where you had asked for information, we did not get it. But here's some of the problems with this, we should not be voting on any of this. I'm not going to ask like this community, like some of my council members, who want to tell you stuff that it's a volatile situation, not volatile. You come here, be honest and transparent. And that's what, what happens. No one went after Ernst &amp; Young, not once did they apply, that's just not true. That's just a lie, I'm going to say a false, it's a lie. You know, when you talk about how these applications came, we don't know. But I want to know how Star Park got in there, and I want to know why it's back on again, or to, to be determined under two three zero three two three, but it's back up again. And if listening to Council, Council Murphy is stating some means for giving money, it wasn't an application. How do you get money if you don't put in the application? I tell you how it happened, because that money fall into my hands. You don't have to apply or ask for it. That tells you something is going on, and it's not right. That tells you right there, and it's back on this agenda again to get that same fifty thousand dollars. Well, when people gaslight you up here, tell you the temperature in the meeting, what I have been fighting for, my temperature, yeah, I'm hot. I don't have because the money ain't reaching the residents. You guys, our ad hoc president's saying, you know, the administration is keeping us in the dark. They're not being transparent. My reasoning and my fight, we actually shouldn't have to fight. It's for transparency. How does somebody get fifty grand? And you, and apparently now it's being said they didn't apply for it. I'm not understanding that. But I tell you what, it's back on this tonight to vote for it. What I want, and when this come back around, we don't have an application. How do you get approved? It's the same item. Normally, if it doesn't, if it fails, you can't bring it back for a day. And this is bringing back, back with the to be determined. How do you want a resolution, you don't know who you're giving the money to?
That's true.
That makes sense. This is absolutely ridiculous, we shouldn't be voting on any of this mess. And at this point, maybe that's the idea you need to be involved. Because this is the problem. This is probably not the things that my colleagues say, you know, and, 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 if you're dry smitten up here, I'm listening to you. Because I'm, I'm going to listen to you, we don't, we don't talk about. But in, in your, because I saw these organizations, I'm here, it's one on here from my park. Guess what, Ty Murphy got no part of my park, I don't sell anymore, I support them, I show up. That's what I do. I'm going to have clean hands in dealing with this. How do you come back around and put this right back on here? Did Ernst &amp; Young approve this? So, but then, what the, kind of a week? Five days? Five days, they approved this? Did Ernst &amp; Young approve with that fifty thousand to be determined again, they didn't come here before us? I don't believe that, I do not believe that. So, when you listen to people who were talking, they stirred voices to say, you know, the process, we didn't pick the people, and it was redacted. How do you redact something that you didn't put in the application? You can't redact it if it doesn't exist. So, I want to make one.
What's your request?
Madam Chair. Don't shake your head.
What's your request?
Are you aware that we are referring to the redaction of the information?
Madam Chair, please warn her, take it to floor. This is my time. She is Star Park's second ward, she didn't change who her director is in the last week or two, and she was staying, she was the director, zero transparency, she was an ad hoc committee, didn't come back, didn't want to afford the session. She was telling people, texting people how they couldn't apply, but then your organization applied, or didn't apply, they got fifty grand. That makes sense. So, I'm not going to let you gaslight this community anymore. I'm not going to let you do that, the volatile, no. That much, you become a bit transparent. And, and, and you didn't, you never disclosed it was yours. You never told us. We found out in the meeting. You never told, you got that, Julie, in the meeting, Julie, did you know? And I said it on record, did you know that Councilwoman Lewis had put in for Star Park's second ward? And she said, Tommy, no, not until just now. So, when we, Madam Chair, you need to warn her, she really stopped my time, because she's doing exactly what she hate when other people do. As point of words, request information.
What's your request?
I, I don't want to hear it.
What's your request?
Thank you. So, when they get, I want Ernst &amp; Young, I want to know how Ernst &amp; Young approved the application that did not exist. I, I want to know, how do you prove it was resubmitted and approved again for the second time? Second time. So, how do you prove that you're just on an ad hoc committee? I'm not understanding, I, I, I'm not understanding that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. All right, um, you have to use your hands, go ahead.
Good, thank you, Madam Chair. You know, it, it makes sense to me, because I'm sitting here. First, I just want to say to this community, there is a false narrative going out to the community that certain members are voting to abstain on offer resolutions. And I want to say this. First of all, I'm voting no, as far as that ARPA question. Because I felt like we needed to put more money, um, into the, um, line items of home improvements for the residents. Five million dollars is simply not enough.
Five million dollars is simply not enough. Secondly, the process was not transparent at all. And we're sitting here talking about that process. I did not agree with the makeup and selection of the twelve member, or should I say, the so-called opera committee. Now, and then after, the recommendations were made by this so-called opera committee, the council, we've been left out of process altogether, period. It's been, it's, it's been a secretive process. Um, but, we didn't even, we don't even know, uh, how the recommendations were made. We get resolutions in front of us, that apparently, uh, were, uh, different organizations or whoever, that this, uh, alleged opera committee, uh, recommended. We don't know it, we're getting resolutions to vote. Now, why would I vote on something that has not been transparent? Why? Make it make sense to me. I can't vote on that. I'm not gonna vote on it. And yes, to my colleague who's putting out this false narrative all over Facebook, that says, um, some council members are abstaining their vote to vote on opera resolutions? Yeah, I'm one of the council members. That's gonna upset, because you know what, the process was not transparent. And I don't vote on anything that's not transparent.
That's right.
I don't even have meetings, one-on-one with this administration. Because I like transparency. I don't keep, I don't, I don't walk around gaslighting the community. And hiding.
That's right.
And I want the community to know, I will continue to abstain my vote. On this nonsense.
That's right, dear. This nonsense.
We didn't, we didn't do the community right in the first place. Because you only put five million dollars. And a budget for home improvement. Make it make sense to me. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, I believe that is, if I want to repeat, and this count this, um, discussion item, so, this is, this is the vote, that's the first round. We're gonna make discussion in second round. Go ahead, Mr. Prentice.
This is a program, we have James and Jane, and I have asked that they put at the end of the meeting.
We're having it at.
Some members wouldn't do it, so, we have. And we ain't gotta have it again, it doesn't need to drive our concern. We've got work to do before we now, like it. I'm sure with what Mr. Prentice is saying, I'm definitely with him. We'll have a resolution ready, and I hope that he's saying, you know, in addition to that, we'll be ready to vote on the resolution. I stepped out with this final, I'm sorry, Mr. Prentice, if you communicate with this staff about cooperation, God.
Uh, yes, I did actually.
Then he say, I wanna recommend it was.
He said, and now we have hit the first, we need to ask.
Okay, so, when we do the resolution, I wanna make sure, that you read the issue about twelve. We're asking for a review of the terms of the review, the application, and by the end, whatever we need. And it will see if at least some council members are serious about trying to get the word. High school and replacement, Mr. Prentice, was said across the, in the two thousand twenty-three revenue share. That really now, from the speed there, you might have to trip in here, that, because that's from the speed there.
Mr. Mays, I have a point of information, I was wanting to hear that, and I wasn't sure if you had already known, you guys, so you did not know that?
Yeah, I did, I'm very serious about the, he's home improvement, it's a small business. I really wanna steal help, Morris Peterson, that group which is downtown, period. I also live up some smart business folks that put in, wanna counter by, oh, living through it, that can change the life, or better than that. For generations, it's a, home improvement, this winter guy, as you talked about. And remember Claire, and others, myself, and you, we want twenty million to take that for it. And then the small business, you know, I still wanna discuss the lost revenue category, not Mr. Prentice, so, so. So I'm hoping the council takes it serious. It's a good day, my half is tipped to those who voted to try to make this process happen. I hope we can continue to give forms, and I hope we put the work in. Mr. Prentice, you mentioned, almost all of these, that's the downer group, which is our base of folks, some councils, we give words there. And if that back, we need to put the work in, to script the fact. So I just wanna be serious about this, I'm serious about. I wanna not talk this, let me first, I have to do, uh, the, so I'm, so. It was, I'm willing, Mr. James, I don't have to leave something else. I'll move next, a different thing. So I'm this one, I couldn't vote, I'd rather have the discussion at the end of the meeting, but you can get it there, it's been had and done. And it's the very redact, thank you, Robert.
They have a discussion in second round. They have a discussion, seeing no movement. We have a roll call, we need your man of work.
One of the, Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Can you say, but, but they think this.
This is.
Kyle, that was, they, I don't really know.
Thank you for calling in, so this is the session for Clyde and Mr. Moore regarding Earth's to hand attendance, and, and discussion regarding opera, and, um, for your information, we have voted to, to all things necessary to effectuate this subpoena.
So if I have to make a decision.
Mr. Murphy?
No.
Mr. Prentice? No. Mr. Prentice?
No.
Prentice, no. Mr. Prentice?
No.
Mr. Prentice?
Yes.
No.
Mr. Prentice? So there was one yes, seven no? So if there was one yes, seven no, that, um, motion fails, the next item, I'm gonna do another note. Um, is to have a discussion regarding the emergency purchasing ordinance, at the end of, um, after resolutions, is there a motion?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mays?
Yeah, I would move to have a discussion about the emergency purchasing ordinance. And I, at the end of the meeting, after resolutions, that's all.
There's a motion for to add a discussion regarding the emergency purchasing ordinance, um, at the end, after resolutions, is there support?
Support.
Is it moved to properly seconded? Um, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays?
Real quick, um, I wanna probably make an amendment to this emergency, emergency ordinance discussion at the end of the meeting, to include the emergency, an emergency affidavit, and then they do it this way. Before I make the amendment, if I discuss this emergency purchasing ordinance, through you, uh, Madam Chair, to, um, Amanda.
Amanda?
Yeah.
And that, and Mr. Rowland?
You like to remind me.
Amanda.
And then after Amanda, I'm gonna call, um, attorney, Lee, I called, yeah, that you have there, you may have to do the last thing. Amanda, if you walk up here real quick, because I'm trying to do something. Um, we had a discussion today about a property that's in somebody's name, husband and wife.
No, it's husband.
Well, I'm talking from what I know here, uh, a husband and wife, consumers is in the wife's name. The husband might have left and gone, and ordered the water off. Three kids and the wife left behind, no vehicle to get the water off. And with the second day, I'm thinking some type of affidavit, saying, hey, I'll take responsibility for this period to this period, to that period, stage of the dispute has worked out, could possibly get the water to turn off. I'm looking at, you turn easy in them, um, water fangs too. But, um, Amanda, in like a manner of self, shed light on the situation. Is it anything that folks in the city could do to remedy that, in your mind, yes or no?
Um, no, the case that we were working on.
And you put the mic on the floor.
Um, the situation that was happening, this particular account, the property is in the only, in the husband's name. So, you can't turn the water off. Um, there's nothing that we can do to stop it, we don't get in the middle of landlord, the streets, nor a husband and wife's excuse. The only thing that we have right now, that we use the Declaration of Occupancy, is during the time when the Jesse County Treasurer owns the property. So right now, like an individual owner, we do not need someone to lock that. No, to me, we gotta keep out of that, that's my, my, my.
We have no paperwork, no affidavit, no nothing.
No, I mean, he's the husband, you can put an affidavit, you know, affidavit to her.
No, I've never been married, I've always lived my life, I've put property, leave, and just arrived, I've opened the keys, but anyway, let me do this. Uh, thank you, Amanda, through you, Madam Chair, to, uh, I'll be at the second round of the five minutes. I don't wanna shortchange you with one minute.
Mr. Mays?
But this is.
I realize this is important, we say Jermaine.
I am, because we're talking about emergencies, yeah, and I know emergencies, purchases, just the item that I was talking about, had to do with the resolutions that the fair signed. But at the same time, I'm telling y'all, I'm making an amendment to discuss even the emergency purchases at water. And so I am trying to stay the main, as it relates to the, and if then it's gonna be made, uh, in the second round.
Mr. Prentice, could Jermaine, you may have now, that would leave with the discussion.
I can do it.
I appreciate that.
Madam Chair, I would move to amend, if, uh, James and Jane can also include, um, emergency water purchases, that's all.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to amend, um, the discussion regarding the emergency purchasing ordinance, to, to include emergency water determines? Is there support?
Oh, yeah.
Okay. Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Madam Chair, through you to attorney, Lee.
That's your second clock, wait, go, take it to your clock, it's already set, there you go.
Through you to attorney, Lee, passing from speaker, focus speaker, thirteen, ten, nine, watch the clock, we are not your minutes up there. And tell her what you're mad at, I know you get mad, I'm still saying, attorney Sharice Williams.
Good evening, everybody, my name is Attorney Sharice Williams, now, it's good to see you all, thank you so much, Councilman Mays, for calling me up. Uh, I appreciate you just hearing me out. I had a resident of the City of Flint come to my office and ask me to help her. Um, as Councilman Mays alluded to, her husband left her and her children, and, you know, he, he went away to Kentucky, and he turned the water off, I mean, really, it sounds like despite her. The electricity is in her name, she purchased the home with him, but the home is only in his name. So I'm asking that the city would do some sort of emergency, um, affidavit, allow her to take responsibility for the water. She can pay for it, but, um, there's, there's no way, no, her children don't have water right now. And I think that this is a situation that you all have been about, it didn't happen. Um, and while I can, for the court process, it will be rushing to review that, such as allow her to do an emergency temporary affidavit to turn the water off, so that she can support her understanding. And this is something, you know, we have emergency, you guys have the power, you really see, and I think that you all, our very reasonable, to know that this is an emergency situation. Um, you know, we could, we could really help her, um. I don't know if there's anything else you wanna ask me, I think you've made out.
Let me say this, it's a situation, if you got a mayor, with Manchester, people split up, the houses, the, the husband's bad, the wife, the consumer's determined. Now, in my mind, it's illegal to cut off utilities, for less people, I like roaches, that's wrong, I'm a big shit, I mean, I'm, I'm.
I understand.
Certainly be big shit, and it's wrong, but you gotta file with the court, and times don't pass. Um, as the courts try to support it, who can take it fine, because that comes, I think the easiest solution is for the city to have an affidavit, just like they do with the railers. The purpose of the affidavit is to have the person who filed, the water going in their name, sign as a September, whatever, to the period that this agreement is over, that we're responsible and we'll pay the bill, um.
I just wanna add, with me, um, her, so her license, her address, all of her things, I'm registered to this home, it's not like she just randomly asked him to find a water, that, um, any home, I mean, she can show that she's been here for a while, and, um, it's a unfortunate situation. Um, and, and I just wanna add, I'm not being compensated for this, I have, um, helped her grow, so, I would appreciate it. I don't wanna take up all your time and share a question.
So, if you manage to raise it, truly want to, probably, the shares of us don't wanna create an emergency affidavit, not this for this situation, but for something common, have it there. I don't wanna get any emergency ordinance that we can pass that can send a immediate effect, and that ordinance would allow us to serve as people required with an affidavit, in a emergency period. We might have to do it by ordinance, if it's against the space, and don't wanna do it by any emergency affidavit. Purpose is to have a lot of their pay, whether these landlords are on a pay, or they do it like when it's a rental, they tend to pay.
What's your request?
Um, Amanda, do you know if that affidavit is required by ordinance, or it's just a policy?
Uh, I think it's just a policy, there's nothing there, there's no, that's the address, the situation, I think that's what the client was saying, we have nothing there. What we can create and do our work, and the foundation, I think we should do, and let this be an example, of fifty dollars to ten more people that are first.
Councilman, I was gonna, I was gonna try to do something in the board, but the husband is like a scientist in Kentucky, so I can't. I mean, I would need him to come, or to try to, you know, resolve this, and, you know, that has been proven difficult, and right now, I just understand that they don't have water. And, you know, she paid for it, she has the money, it's just that, when she went down to, um, speak to the office, they told her, like, the house is in my name, we can help you. And with the driver's license, and nobody was her name, I think that she was telling me to, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Prentice.
Amanda, can you come back up for this? Through you, through the city attorney, is there any, if we just pass a motion tonight with, with direction, is that enough to affect policy, or, because if we do an emergency ordinance, even emergency ordinance don't begin Monday, so.
Yes.
I know, we can do, we can do an emergency one, that, until, so we can, that, that one, that's Sunday. So, how do we, how do we, one second, Amanda, how do we, your motion that can be made and passed by council, be enough to change policy if this is an ordinance that they need to have a, a affidavit?
I can't definitively answer that right now, but my gut tells me probably not, it's, it is a motion, and you, you have to act on something. Um, I am familiar with, with the landlord tenant situation. And that says you're putting the water in the name of the tenant, we have a final copy of the lease, and there's a lot of requirements.
But is that by ordinance or that?
That's by ordinance, yeah, that's all of the ordinance that leaves out the landlord tenant situation, what you have to do to have the water turned on in the name of the tenant. Um, as far as court options, though, uh, sometimes people can go to court and ask for, um, a temporary restraining order, and that's.
What, temporary restraining order to turn the back on the water?
Yeah, I don't know, I haven't, I haven't, I don't have any relations of it, but to, to, to block the landlord from turning it off, which they have, I mean. But I, I, I guess I can only speak.
So, so what documentation would we need to say if, if a parent gifted their, their father and their child to stay in there? Would there actually be a lease agreement?
If a parent lets a child stay there?
If a parent lets a child stay there, but the, the water wants to be in the child's name, would that need a tenant agreement?
Under our current, current ordinance, I believe so. When we're talking about rental situations, that's why I'm familiar with it, as I'm sitting here today. To expand it beyond that, I would, I would appreciate it like a written address.
Well, time, time is of the essence, if they don't have the water, and we don't wanna wait until Monday to have an emergency ordinance, they could start. It would be, yes.
I, I don't think that, um, uh, I'm sorry, I don't know, yes, I would say, I'm so, I could have done a CRO, but we would have concerned them with the CRO, he's a consultant. So there's, I would really have looked at all options, which is why I'm here today. And there has to be something, like, we're here to help people and make sure that they can just have living situations, like.
Because she hasn't been certain of it.
No, she hasn't, she's been living there with her husband, this is not a landlord tenant situation, and she needs, and it's unfortunate. And so, right now, we just need to make sure that she has the water for her kids. The whole point of the affidavit is to make sure that the liability is attached to the person who owns the home.
So since you have direct, uh, communication with this person, have, and it's, and it's obviously not something that's recommended, have we talked to the neighbor to see if we can't pay their water bill for the month, and we tap into them from a host ticket? Yeah, I, we, we're, we're gonna do whatever we can to do with water back on.
Yeah, I, so, so, that, that wouldn't take it for, I would be able to refer that, that wouldn't be legal. But what would be legal is for you guys to.
No, it has to be.
Well, well, I'm just saying, I mean, technically, that would be giving another home water that is not hooked up to that water. And what I'm saying is that if you're hardly able to fill out an affidavit that says I will pay, that is the purpose of the affidavit, and you guys spend a lot of time. I mean, it's, it's very simple, maybe have stipulation on it, whatever you're gonna say. But it's not that she doesn't have the ability to pay, it's that she can't turn it on in her name. And I think that's a very unfortunate situation, because most people, wow, it is smart to have your name on your house, um, with, with your spouse, that's a situation right now, I just got married, I mean, my, my name's only on the house, so if I just decide to do something petty like that, I mean, that would be a really unfortunate situation. So, I know, I, we can find a solution, right, I think that's, that's very simple, and I think all of you guys here are very smart. We can, we can find some means to make sure that there's one handle for kids.
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round?
Um, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, then.
Attorney Williams? Councilor Mays, if you can say your seat for a second, because I don't have a question for you two. Through you.
Go ahead.
To Attorney Williams. Uh, so our decision we've given you, uh, is something that is going to take entirely too much time. So maybe very plain today, what can we do to make sure her water is turned back on tomorrow? What can you need from us today?
So to allow the water department to accept the affidavit from a resident in the home with the license, with their address at the home. And, and one other, wanna show another, um, it'd be, she has to be to the name in her name as well, the other to them. But I would just say, with the, with the address and the law already seen, that can show that, and then it has to be an emergency situation, that way you don't have to extend it to everyone.
All right, um, thank you, uh, through you to Mr. Mays. So what we're saying is, we're, we're trying to do this today, because once I give this person an affidavit, we will introduce an ordinance or some kind of language that will speak to the situation moving forward, with, with a layout supervisor, so that we do not end up with cases of fraud where people who are not necessarily in this situation try to abuse what we're introducing.
But, Mays.
Yes, sir.
Do you have, Chair, Councilperson, you said, exactly, that, that's what you said, that I said.
But, sir, could you keep that?
My, 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 listen, you guys, uh, Councilwoman, is that, where we said, we have to act by resolution and order, and we came directly to order employees to do something from what we said, but the mayor, in my opinion, can dictate an emergency affidavit. And, and my opinion, the quickest route, here, be water department, which is headed by the treasurer, Amanda, and for the mayor to briefly create to the legal department, an emergency affidavit for this, that affidavit could be signed, and the liability could carry, you know, even this service of power with the resident who's still there. But if they don't do that, in our opinion, everybody's bigger than me, and it's not, and it's pretty serious.
So, Attorney Williams, Attorney Williams, has anyone talk, tried to, um, speak with the mayor to see if that emergency affidavit can be acted?
So, um, my thoughts, I'll start here first, so, but, um, because you guys would have needed tonight, I just started with it, right? So, but we did talk, she had talked to the water department, she was the leader, so, um, I'm willing to make that request to him, um, or I wish she, for instance, the office is here, I would make that request for her. Um, but I would like, if you could, to act, if, if that's not something that you can do, um, sometimes it's me, if you guys could act on it, it used to vote by Monday, that way you wouldn't have to shrink it along. I mean, I don't know what they have to do, but I would like to have something in place with her. And I've been speaking to them, you know, they've been doing, um, trying to, you know, make it work, but I didn't know it's a, it's a very unfortunate situation.
Okay, thank you, I just, we just, I can follow up here, as soon as we can do anything is Monday. And so if maybe, um, you, you can talk to Mr. Williams, our city administrator's also back there, so if maybe one of them can get you that solution that you need quickly, um, and certainly I'll lean on Mr. Mays, you can come, uh, excuse me, Councilor Mays, if you can come up with anything that we can do faster than that, um, I would like to make sure that this woman and her children do get water as soon as possible.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion, Madam Chair? Go ahead, Mr. Um, Amanda, and, and could you come up for a minute, please?
Um, and I'm starting, I know, because it takes y'all about twenty-five thirds seconds to get up here. I'll count as long as it does, so sit back.
Amanda, just stay close, so we're discussing.
So here's my, here's my question. Um, I believe she does need to go to the mayor, Miss, uh, Sharice Lee Williams, because, uh, has the mayor, and I want to be honest, I work with the mayor, um, has there been times where people came to you, and you were asked for, for the water to be cut off? Because I came to you before, when Roger Duncan did, and the water was cut off before. When it, they needed water, but the water was cut off, and it was done, I know on a property on Littleton, and I know some other properties, so I know that the mayor has the ability, this would come a jury, the report, to cut water on, and many people did do a, a affidavit, they did give their ID. So, have, has any of those instances that when a person is deceased, and it may be a probate, um, or the property was given to them, and it's still, you know, it was a relative or a spouse, but the water was cut off, but that water was failed to be cut back on because of that person, um, no longer was alive? Um, have we had those, that, that is basically almost the same, that person disappeared?
Well, we've had instances where, you know, different scenarios, the lady got brought to court, and we've had judges saying to turn the water back on.
And there are some that have not went to court.
Not in my aware, but you know a specific, I have a son. I have a good thing basically on top of my head, but.
I think that one, what is it, nineteen, uh, next to nineteen fourteen, what is it, nineteen, nineteen twenty? So, yeah, there are, there are problems, there's more than that, when Roger was here, he attended a conference, but they gave us fill out an affidavit. And it's basically a call that the mayor, mayor, time they stayed, he wanted to make sure if any person needed water, that, and there was, it wasn't a lot, that he made sure he took care of them, and he did actually take care of them, so I don't know if she has not talked, Ms. Lee. Um, Attorney, Sharice Lee.
Sharice, Sharice.
Attorney Sharice Lee, so your client, your pro bono client, that you're taking care of, that's very kind of you, um, she has not spoken with Mayor Lee yet.
That's my average, and she, she.
Speaking of words, Lee.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's my, she has very limited English, so.
Okay, what word she need?
She's in first word, that's why I called, I'm in Mays.
Okay, and so I think she too, I, he is, the mayor has been very accommodating before, so I think it's, you know, in fairness, to talk with him to see if he can do something, um, for her, to help her, and that's the same back. I mean.
They said he won't, that he's not gonna be available after tomorrow, so I.
Okay, well, Mr. Edwards can do it, that's why he is the city administrator. He's here, he can make it happen, when the mayor's not here, the city administrator is the number two person in charge. So let's not cut no, no water, and, and was that the mayor's secretary that was telling you that he won't be available?
Um, I'm not sure, but they were.
Okay, now, Charlie Johnson's saying that the mayor will not be available. Hey, this, this is ridiculous, does this work, work? Because they called their councilman? Mr. Edwards, can, Mr. Edwards, can you come here, come up to the podium, please, sir? Because we need, and I've seen this happen, I don't wanna have to avoid it, because I walked over to the water department, did. When I worked for the mayor, and he was reasonable, he took care of those residents. You know, there were some situations that they were caught up in probate court. That's a fact, and that water was cut back on, they pay, is it fifty dollar fee, Amanda? Seventy-five, seventy-five dollars just changed, didn't it? Okay, so, Mr. Edwards, is there anything we can do, if the mayor is not gonna be available, that you can do to get the water cut back? I worked with you at the time, but I know water was cut back off. So, is there something we can do, because she's saying she'll take responsibility, her ID matches would show she's the person at that property, she's willing to sign the affidavit, because I know this has happened before, if the mayor's not gonna be available, and I know you're the mayor, and I mean, you work with your friends, is there something we can do to help this lady and her children? You can't, a mother cannot take care of, come to children out there. I mean, but she don't have water, I apologize for that.
Uh, Madam Chair, to Councilwoman Williams, this is, is purely a legal matter. That's my, that's my best answer to you, this is purely a legal matter.
Okay, so, Ma'am, so why did I check that?
That's right, go ahead, continue.
I'll let you, uh, continue.
All right, Madam Chair. Thank you very much, Council, uh, Councilwoman Williams, but that is, the trust of it is, it is a legal matter. What you're asking me to be done, you have a person holding that property that has taken action, however, we may not like it or whatever, but these are similar situations that I, I dealt with when I was at DAJF, so I know this is purely a legal matter. Whoa! If the court says we gotta do it, we gotta do it.
So, I'll, this is hers, but I'll say, I'll request your information.
What's your request?
Um, they're here to, um, Councilwoman Williams, um, so we're willing to, uh, I don't, we can't do this, we can't. So that if it's, if just the ever stating, we can't do anything, we need a court. Mr. Edwards, so you're stating that we can't do anything, you need a court order?
As I pointed out, I said, this is a legal issue, there are, there's going to be a liability involved in this issue. Don't care how you slice it, there is a liability involved in this issue, so it is a legal matter, yes.
Whoa!
So, during the, the declaration of the legal matter, you're saying that as, even as council, we cannot do an emergency affidavit? This doesn't make sense to me. It, it just doesn't make sense.
I'm gonna tell you why I wouldn't do it.
Uh, Madam Chair, through you, through Councilman Mays.
She's got the home on her.
I think we should, um, go ahead and go through with trying to, um, do an affidavit, because this lady, this, this, this lady with her children, she needs her water. This is crazy, and I'm sure that Attorney, um, Lee would not come before us with, with information that's not true and accurate. Okay, she's, she's gonna stand on her efforts. So, I'm, I'm, I'm about to see the council vote as far as doing the affidavit, so that this, uh, mother and her children can have their water on tomorrow.
Yes!
As soon as possible.
Any other discussion?
Yes.
Yes, in the first round, go ahead, Mr. Fiker.
So, through you two, five. You stated that this issue is a legal matter, so are you saying that someone, you, um, is the ownership of the house, made a decision to go through the courts and have the water shut off, and the judge ruled in favor of them to be able to do what they done, and even if we, as a council, created any kind of ordinance or emergency, do the courts have jurisdiction to make the final say? And if we go and try to create something to turn the water back on, are we saying we are, um, jeopardizing the city to possible liability issues by turning off the water that is bigger than us when it comes onto legal matter? Is that what you're saying?
I'm saying to you that owners have rights. Now, you can let the attorney, you can act, don't go by what I have to say, ask the city attorney. The owner of that property has rights, if the council ignores their rights, I think you do open yourself a legal liability.
I am.
You should ask the city attorney.
So, through the chair, through the city attorney, are you familiar with this situation?
Now, this is the first I heard, anything about the city here tonight?
So, I, I can't ask the attorney, because we can't.
What's your request?
He said what?
What'd he say?
Is it possible that the owner can't request for the water to be turned on? Is it possible that the owner can't request for the water to be turned on? Through you two, you're talking, um, do you know what he was talking about?
Yes, she's already tried that, he, he is from Kentucky, and, and he has, he has children with her, and he left there and turned the water off, and I, I, I mean, at least from pers- at least from what I gathered from the situation, it was purposeful, it was to get her to move out with the children, I mean. So he left, he has another relationship with someone else, and he turned the water off. And typically, that was, you know, that was a, really a constructive eviction, and that's legal, right? So the owner does not have claimant in this situation, there's not, what would have leaded to happen was for him to evict her, to evict her, because she's a partial owner, he just didn't put her name on the deed. And this, and I, I understand that there are, um...
So, through, through, um, you two, talking, when you say she's a partial owner, partial owner, if you need someone, and not a structure, you are some paperwork that went to the house.
Right, so what I mean by that is that she purchased someone with him, asked her husband, he put it in his name, and then now she...
Say that one more time.
She purchased, she helps to pay for the home, it, nobody's not in her hands. She's there, she still has residence there with the children.
What's your request?
No, I'm not familiar with that, um, but, um, there's something to be researched. Um, I, I'm just trying to figure out what legal right that we have as a, through you two, Amanda. About fifty-five seconds left. Amanda, based on, you been familiar with this situation, what is your organization?
When we go to the account, early this afternoon, the water is in the husband's name, the property is in the husband's name. He ordered it off, as the owner, you can order it off. I can't turn it back on, because her name was on there. We have different standards than the consumer's does, we are liable for that, that's immutable stuff on the water, this, so I can't, I can't do that.
So if we turned the water off, and he already ordered it off, would that jeopardize?
I believe so, that would be an attorney question, but yes, I mean, that would...
Would that jeopardize you overstepping the boundaries of the owner of that property?
Correct, I mean...
That's, that's what brought him coming in, and I fear...
Thank you. Any other discussion in the first round? Seeing done, I'm going to take my time. Mr. Trevor Brown of Mary Hill, you do this to my niece, and I will find you, and I will cut your balls off. Anybody who does this to my children needs to be shot.
Y'all gotta get out and reach out and shit.
I, I think this man needs to have everything done to him that possible. How old are their children, considering this? Do you know?
I don't know their age.
Are they underage then?
Yeah, they're, 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 um, I think they're one of them, like, they...
I need to see, you're taking a shot.
But I think that's a man who has two of their children. I mean, that's why, I think, I, I don't think that my, my seven men have been aware of it, and nobody has lost their seven. So, I'm going to do everything in my power to help this, help this mother. You know, I had a resident of mine who paid their, um, rent and their water bill to the landlord, they, she was without water for six weeks before she contacted me. But we, I think her water's on now, her's on, did her water get turned back on, you know? I don't know, her name isn't, I don't know, I have to look up the address, because I can't remember, so, but anyways, um, we're going to do everything we can to get this water on, and if the mayor doesn't act or can't, we will make sure that we have an emergency ordinance or, um, draft it for Monday, then we can, we can't do anything today. We have to do it at a council meeting. So we will get that water on, if it's not, if the mayor doesn't turn it on before Monday, we will have it on Tuesday.
So I know that everybody's been talking about the liability, I mean, here in this situation, you can write it in the affidavit that she's willing to take on the liability and, um, gosh, I'm going to say any words, but to basically protect the city, right, so that you're not taking on any liability from them, and I mean, that's something that we, you know, we're in the, to the affidavit, but I think that's why I'm here today, to spend my time waiting for guys to speak, because I think it's important too, and she, she was the help, so...
So if, what I'm, if nobody else emailed the city attorney, I'm just sending an email to the city attorney and ask them to draft an emergency ordinance or affidavit, or whatever you need, whatever's necessary to get that water on by Tuesday. She might have to, even if she requires deposit, which I would assume would be, because it's a new water account.
She already went to go pegging every problem, but she, she didn't have, she didn't have the affidavit.
Right, okay, so we'll, we'll see what we can do to get that on by Tuesday, if not before.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, that's my time, stick around.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
When I listen to everything that's being said, I want to try to do this real quickly by making sure I'm not stopping the city attorney through you, Madam Chair, to the city attorney. Mr. City Attorney, have you ever heard of the American House of, like, the White House, the Dowell Rights?
You know, when you brought it up, it reminded me of law school, so I just did a quick search, okay, did. The information that I have is that in Michigan, uh, Dowell Rights were eliminated, uh, effective April sixth, two thousand seventeen.
Two thousand seventeen, so they disappeared in two thousand seventeen, that I used to buy houses, fell them, and I knew a Dowell right, so here recently, two seventeen, that it went away. So let's get away from the Dowell water, because that would have put her into some type of wrongness, yeah. Now, let's get back to where we was at, this is my position. The city gets sued all the time, but you can get put out of your house, listen to this, y'all, you get put out of your house for not having water on. City inspector can come and post and say you ain't helping safety wise. So if the mayor can do what they...
Are you sure that that happens, because I've, and you haven't been able to do that, because I've got a house that I'm trying to get, um, to attack the case?
You know, I'm confessing, I don't want people to have posted the violation, but yes, annoyance. That's what happened up at St. Agnes with the house, they posted it, because no, whatever, that can happen to these kids and these women. So what I'm saying is, if the mayor can sign an emergency purchase for hundreds of thousands, because the council didn't need, surely he can do an emergency purchase to keep a house from being good to them and to cut the water off. Now, I'm a council, if this husband's going to come back and sue the city for cutting the water off, whether we gonna help us sue him for what's called a constructive eviction? If you attacked a landlord and you cut the power off, the water off, and try to make people leave your property like roaches, it's illegal.
Right.
Google MCL six hundred point two nine one eight, you get triple damages. In the statute, it calls triple damages. MCL six hundred two nine one eight, that's going to be the unlawful ejection and detainment law. You can't cut people's utilities off. So he already carrying that bill. We protecting the health, safety, welfare of our women and kids. We have a right to protect the health, safety, and welfare of women and kids. Particularly if they got the deposit money and signing affidavit that say, uh, the liability of the water is on me. I'll pay it from tomorrow until we get this set. Let him sue the big time city of Prince to turn the water on, so I disagree with you respectfully, Miss Adams. What you think, he gonna beat us for a million dollars? Then she gonna feed him for a million dollars for doing any legal constructive eviction? But that's just me talking. In other words, if I'm the mayor, and I can order that water off, I'm ordering it off. Now, in my opinion, no matter what Mr. Edwards saying, I got the highest respect for Amanda, but the mayor can hear voices, he can buy a pie of cheese, he can, uh, circumvent, he can buy a cheese cheese. We always get sued, so to cut water off for a woman and some babies, and I take my chance every time. On this one, because it's going to be some more. If they, if we draw up an emergency affidavit or a legal deposit charter, that water could be on tomorrow in our hands, but somebody got to order that. And we change their voice, but we shall can later on in that process and see what we do. But think about it, you ain't got water, my brother never can come and post your house. It puts you out. Public health, safety, welfare, the emergency staff, the mayor, and votes they do. We would leave an emergency when we cut people off from voting, and wouldn't cut them off doing the emergency water, but, thank you so much.
So from what I'm hearing, so there is really nothing we can do for her until, um, Monday or Tuesday, definitely. And so, what I suggest, um, is that we, and Madam Chair, to greet Ms. Parks Green through you. Me love you, our, our team is related to the officer, and I know that there's, and all those things that you just told us, because there's, there's nothing we can do until Monday or Tuesday, there's nothing we can do. And this does seem like a matter for the mayor's office. Is it okay if we connect you with Ms. Reese, because I do understand, she did say this is your first time hearing about this. So is there, are, is there something that you can have a conversation with her tonight and take this up tomorrow, to see what we can do to get this taken care of?
Yeah, well, the mayor's going to be in Washington, so not immediately in the morning, so we won't be able to see him, but I'll just try to find ground to get him to do it, so I'll try to do that.
Okay.
Any other discussion in the second round?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Advisor.
So, just to switch topics real quick, because this is a dual-purpose, um, motion. I want to get to the emergency purchases. Madam, I just emailed you to get a copy of the ordinance, somebody can seem to find the ordinance that the mayor used to, uh, make these emergency purchases. The only copy that I've got was one that was an emergency one that was adopted. So, I guess, Madam Chair, can we, I'd like to make a motion to...
Does the flag, do you have an option?
No, I started with it. Mr. Bush, I want to hand this to you, you can read that real quick.
So the chair, um, would like to order someone to reset the...
He did the reset?
Yeah.
Dr. Lewis, the backup again.
I said I'm going to go get one, we got reset, that's what I just said. I need y'all to move back, three rows, start with this row right here, starting with this damn row right here. I can't take it. No, I can't, I can't, I can't take it, I can't take it anymore. Y'all banned from this section. Ten minutes.
Why didn't you do the reset?
Ten minutes. So what?
My head, bro.
He's a fucker. I'm dead, man. Damn. You gone? You gone? Thank you, Jesus. I'm talking about you. No, you're not. Are you? You're not coming back? I'm so sorry. Oh, she said... Hey, y'all, listen, listen, I am so glad she is leaving.
He don't like, listen, I like to commentate, when people be talking, I feel like it's things that I need to say. And, and I, it just come out sometimes, so that's why I be like, hey, man, Sister Burns, when she was saying something, or... I'm glad what you put in, so, no, I be like, let's talk, and that's all to it. Hey, why he ain't paying attention? Y'all gonna follow eighteen news media group, y'all gonna like and subscribe right now.
Hey, man, don't give a hell of that shit.
Y'all don't think that's eighteen news media?
I'm giving that to Tanya Burns.
That's okay, eighteen news media group on YouTube, go like and subscribe right now, we love y'all. And also on TikTok, eighteen news media group, and Facebook.
She'll get her ass up out of here.
That's all right, I make my ass tip, go follow me, so you can see it on eighteen news media group.
Hey, now, get your ass on up out of here.
That's what I think. I'm not even being eighteen.
Hey, y'all, they, they, they really, they really messing with my PTSD. And then this one next to me. Hey, listen, I can tell you, I can tell you what I want to tell you.
You want something in the snack shop?
Yeah, man, why I cuss your ass up? Man, send up a cussing unit. I'm a social worker. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams. Ms. Williams.
No, he's supposed to go get his things.
Okay, so no. I think you're not a bad man.
To see him.
There's water in this thing.
Yeah, she had to go get her kid. I'm gonna sit over here now. No, just five kids.
There are six members present. Um, going back to where we were, we were on the second round of the amended resolution at discussion regarding emergency water purchases to discussions. Mr. Mays, Ms. Muschett, and Mr. Pfeiffer have all spoken in the second round. If anyone else would like to... Okay, I did not know where we were on that. Two minutes. Okay, Mr. Pfeffer, go ahead.
Thank you. So I'm just not getting a copy of the ordinance that, um, I was mistakenly logged up with email, so I didn't get a copy of it till just now. But, uh, I will be sending an email to the city attorney, um, as a recommendation by, um, city attorney being present there for some clarification.
Okay, thank you very much. Is there any other discussion in the second round? Any other discussion in the second round? Okay, so this is a vote on the amended resolution, um, regarding the discussion item on emergency order, please. Thank you. This is the, um, vote on the amended resolution, um, that added discussion regarding emergency water purchases with the emergency purchase ordinance discussion. Roll call, please, Madam Clerk. Yes.
Yes.
Curb. Yes. Ms. Muschett?
Yes.
Ms. Pfeffer?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no, so that discussion item will be added. The next item, um, for agenda change is a discussion regarding preparation for the audit. Is there any discussion? Oh, first of all, I guess I got to make an objection.
No.
Your order.
Oh, I ordered without objection. Thank you very much. Okay, so, first item. All right, so we're going now to public speaking. Um, I've got one important clarification, um, to our city clerk. The agenda currently says two minutes to address. Is, are they getting two or are they getting three based on our discussion at our last meeting? Our last committee? Is there any objection? Delete them at two minutes.
I don't have a chance.
Okay, go ahead and set it for three, please. So members of the public will have three minutes to address this. I am ordering a few objections. Okay, anyone wishes to address the council? You have three minutes to address this on any subject. Only one speaking opportunity.
All right, my name is Al Phil, living on 759 East Lizzie Avenue. After I was kicking off my property at 3512 Milker Street, where all this water situation happened. That's where I was homeless for thirty-eight years, at nine o'clock radio, all the way down to the, uh, past Hennessy, where all that killing was until, where, where we deepened great ground. I mean, it's versus this versus Billhouse, but I see, I like what you did, Miss Appley. I said the dude, uh, cut his walk down, uh, cast away his balls. See what you said? And my balls jumped in my face. I want, I want you to know what, what color was the sky there? Let me see, three sons of, was he white or black? Could you tell me this reason?
Which is the one who loves children? Excuse me, there's no, no candy there.
Oh, you're getting tough over there. Anyway, because, uh, I come from down south, and I, and I, and I'm, I'm a matter of man, but it's all like my same situation to speak. When they, Jennifer Morris gave me a place this time, when I went home to take, tell my wife that she was gone, my two boys, and, and, uh, I was looking at my, how my house kept have water in it and stuff about me. There in the water bill, but they sent about seven FBI's. It said, "Miss, miss, I wanted to go in and take everything out and put it in the cup," but my neighbors interrupted and stopped him, said, "You, you take it, but you gonna test for the girl." And it's just a little next up. Anyway, they got done that and went down south and, woo, well, like you said, there was something about that. But, but, uh, anyways, I won't, I was spending, I went to that, we got fifty, we was over five million dollars, but it, it was fifteen million to check, check out the house in this situation. But in the line more situation over there on Detroit Street, like with the king, I tried to buy a loan, and I asked for five thousand dollars, me friend and I broke. I had a son, and they wouldn't, they never got around to me, but I figured, then they wanted, my wife and my face, they went, Robert. Anyway, I ended up, anyway, the dude, y'all talking about, they don't want to sue, went, he went down in the south, and he left his wife like that, and that's... But I ain't never did that. My wife, I was a homeless, brother be homeless for thirty, thirty-eight years, and friend, and not to see what this situation is. Even the President of the United States could have fixed this, Trump, but he act like he scared of friends coming to him. And who, he ran over it. But anyway, let me just say, I got, well, I am, like, that's why I said my name is Jenny Cash. Or Jenny Comanche on again, and June, January sixth, giving up and going, I didn't want this Trump fellow talking about, oh.
Any other person?
How do we even start with this? The Supreme Court ruled that Snyder, no arrest, should not be charged, anyone here. And the sad part is that it's more Democrats on the Supreme Court than Republicans. We're always leaving Republican as Republican now, but when Democrats get in office, they access our vote, and when they get in office, they don't do nothing for us. You have a Democratic mayor, Democratic congressman, Detroit, state rapper, state senator, House AG, governor, Congress, Senate, president, vice president, Department of Justice AG. How is it that no one in the plant has received a dime from the Flint water crisis? How is it that Snyder ain't walked around with a law that was in store a hundred years, when I used to be out on the streets? It was a thing during November election. We would all stop doing anything illegal because we were scared of this one man grand jury. It's a lot of black and brown people that are arrested under this one man grand jury over a hundred years. And now that Snyder and the rest of his colleagues got indicted, they changed this law and said it's unconstitutional. So what can we do now? Do we go and tell them to let everybody out that was charged and convicted under this law? We should be up in arms, flexibly tired of being abused and disused. They don't do anything because we don't do anything. We sit back there and allow them to treat us like hell, like, like a lord, and we don't say anything. We sit back and wait for them to do something. The Democrats aren't gonna do anything for us now, and I keep saying Democrats because that's losing child. The water wasn't a black or white issue. It wasn't, because the water didn't say on a poison, this is black house, and still the white house. Everybody, ninety-eight thousand people in Flint was poisoned. All of us would be up in arms right now, but let me not say up in arms because they're trying to say now the same right. But we should be up and beating these streets and beating this pavement right now, because Snyder would be in prison.
Thank you.
Along with Jeff Ryan, thank you.
Any other person who wishes to address the council?
I'm gonna do, my name is, uh, George. And, uh, I wanna piggyback just a little bit about what Mr. Wilson just spoke on. It is time that y'all start raising your voices, and we as a city start, you know, common favoring a little bit more, because it really don't make any sense that we are at this point now. We should have been raising our voices and moving like we should. This, this is crazy. I can recall all the way back to when Eric May tried to subpoena Nick Snyder, how we were so divided as a city that that didn't even happen. And, uh, it can be the need of subpoenas to be going down right now, that we may get some no vote shown for a disagreement, but at the end of the day, it's all about the residents. It's all about what the residents want. It's not about any personal agendas. It's all about what the residents want. If the residents want your personal agendas, then push them, but if the residents don't want your personal agendas, then don't push them. You know, it should be to the point to where if the residents want something and you don't want it, that you go ahead and do it for the resident, let them know, hey, this is what y'all want. But this ain't what I want, but it's more y'all, it's me, I was elected to do what y'all wanted me to do. It's seen a whole lot of combatants, instead of just sitting down and listening and just, okay, let me try to help these residents. You wanna argue the reason why you don't want it? And I wanna thank y'all for standing up for the residents, because some of y'all have been doing a, a, a great job, and I appreciate y'all. And, um, continue to have a pretty good meeting. I see it's going a little bit smoother than most of the meetings, especially the ones in the, in the recent past. So hopefully, we can get some business, some more business done, and y'all can continue to put the people first, and thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Council. My name is Billy Gansler, am I right? And I have already listened to the floor, but today I'm here to invite you all to an event that will happen at the Lord's College Public Library on Tuesday, September fourteenth, at five thirty. And if you guys do have time, I will send each one of you a flyer of the event that you can share with your constituents, so I can know that, um, the library is happening. And we're joined by this closing off the, um, cultural center area, and we're gonna have a big, uh, public. And so we're inviting families and schools and boarder, would like to attend, so hopefully, I'll be able to send you guys that email by morning tomorrow. And if you guys would care, we'll send you this email. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Who'd like to address council? Anyone else? Seeing none, come down to council response. Council response is only ten to two minutes.
So, I'm gonna address Mr. Wilson. Mr. Wilson, um, don't just attack, don't, I definitely call the humans to call out my name. Um, I think to date, the United States has sent a hundred and thirty-five billion, with a B, to Ukraine. Um, we got people living with blue tarps and Camden roofs, and we can't get nothing. Um, Hawaii, you know, the section of Hawaii behind us that burnt down, they got seven hundred dollars and said, "You're on your own." A hundred and thirty-five billion went to Ukraine. I don't know about... A hundred and thirty-five billion went to Ukraine, I don't know about anybody else, but what happened to taking care of our own? We don't, and it's not just Democrats and Republicans. Mike Pence on the other, or month, month ago was running for Republican president, said that fixing cities wasn't his issue. He said it on the record in an interview. So, we gotta call out my name, it's not just Democrats, we're not gonna blanket Democrats, it's Republicans. It's, it's, uh, it's all messy, and unless we start addressing it and calling out my name, um, doing, doing blankets, uh, it's all Democrats, it's all Republicans. They deserve their name called up and to be, um, questioned on the record and make them answer for what they are saying or with their actions. Here we are with our funds, fighting over how we can equally distribute ninety-seven million dollars. That's a rounding error in our budget for the United States, that's a pretty rounding error, and we're trying to fix our community the best we can when we're blowing money left and right. So, it's people that don't want to help, that's the real issue, so, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, anyone else, send the consent?
Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I was listening to Mr. Woodson, but I can tell that I believe I'm a hundred percent right. You referred to what was breaking news today, when the Supreme Court, whoever refused to hear, um, the prosecutors' appeal that was related to, um, emergency managers, rich bear them, and one man grand jury. I knew when they dropped tie, bloods them, um, but then when their examination, it was made a mistake. But I will say something about the Democrats and Republicans based upon responding to you. When I seen Snyder, if I ain't mistaken, and I will talk like this, because I use any mistake, but if I ain't mistaken, Snyder endorsed Chris Whitman. During the governor's race, when I think Shugie was running against Whitman. And when you look at all the players and that politics, I was suspicious when they dropped the word that tied wood and prosecutors had been. I wondered, was it a setup, the health, um, the focus of the health there, in that case, that endorsements get erected? So I'm kind of appalled at the process, you would probably there in that moment. Uh, the prosecutors first came to the, uh, I let UAW local six fifty-nine on the backside. And when we was in that meeting, a signal went off, the way they operated that thing, so I'm appalled and I'm surprised. I'm gonna see if they start all over, them charges was dismissed without precedent, let's see what happens now.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Anyone else wish to address the con, the, saying none, we're down to the consent agenda. Uh, entertain a motion to approve the consent, to send the consent agenda to council. It's been moved by Mr. Viper, is there support?
Madam Chair, support.
It's been moved.
Second, if I might say second.
All right, that works too.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Viper?
I'd like to separate.
Just a second, let me get my tape. Okay.
One, four, three, but they're back in the corner, you can say.
Wait.
Move to the bottom, you can say.
Move to the property second and consent agenda, yes, okay, go ahead.
Uh, I'd like to separate two-three-zero, two-three-nine.
Good.
Two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one.
Good.
And... Two-three-zero, three-two-three.
Three-two-three, okay, all right, any other separations? Uh, will, Mr. Viper, separate two-three-zero, two-three-nine, two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one, and two-three-zero, three-two-three.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, I'm gonna separate two-three-zero, two-eight-one-point-one.
Okay.
I'm also separate, two-three-zero, three-zero-two.
Okay.
Two-three-zero, three-zero-four. Two-three-zero, three-one-nine. Two-three-zero, three-two-zero. And, two-three-zero, three-two-zero.
Okay, does anyone else just have any separation again, there's only two items left to separate, does anybody want to separate those? Two-three-zero, three-two-one, and two-three-zero, three-two-two.
Two-three-zero, can you call Lon Contain?
Lon Contain and TSA City of Front F and B Operations Department and my backup, let's, services operators. Those are the only two that are really, uh... Seeing no more separations, then Rockwell call to send two-three-zero, three-two-one, and two-three-zero, three-two-two, to council.
Very well.
Send us the consent agenda to council, two-three-zero, three-two-one, and two-three-zero, three-two.
My name is Robert Taylor.
Yes.
Yes.
Um, yes. Yes?
Yes.
Viper?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah.
Yes. The vote is six yes, zero no, those will be sent to the council. Our first separation is Mr. Viper, two-three-zero, two-three-nine, do you wish making motion?
I want to table this until the next finance committee.
Hey, there's a motion on the floor to table until the next finance committee. Is there support?
Madam Chair, support.
Okay, it's been moved and properly seconded, to table to the next finance committee, and since we're, um...
Madam Chair.
We have one round of three minutes.
Yeah, there is this.
There are one round, three minutes. Anyone wish to have this, would you like to?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Viper.
Yeah, so, I think this is going, um, so we tabled it last time for thirty days, and we asked how many meetings before that for a plan on how this, um, basically get out the debt plan, that we've asked for numerous meetings, on how we're gonna take this rubbish fund out of, um, negative. Uh, through you, to Mr. Moore, Mr. Moore, do you support, approach? Mr. Moore, I wonder if you're familiar with the council's ask, um, as we've asked for, since this, agreeing to this, um, contract adoption would put our rubbish fund in a negative balance, this council has asked numerous times for what is the plan to get that rubbish fund out of a negative balance? Is it raising taxes, is it taking money out of the general fund, we've asked for a written plan on that, are you familiar with that?
I've heard that there's been some discussions, I don't, I don't think I'm the only one to ask for details, I haven't heard any details.
Well, as the, as the CFO, I, I want to make sure that you're aware of it, um, and hopefully, I'm putting on the record that now I'm asking you for this because of, I hope that when council, um, tables this, because, um, there's still a lot of unanswered questions, so... Can I request it from you that we get by the next finance meeting, so that we can properly, uh, move on this resolution that's been, I don't know, two months plus that it's been out there, because we can't get any answers. So, I'm putting my request on the record to you, and if we need to, Mr., uh, through you, Madam Chair, to the clerk, can we do a formal request now that we have an interim CFO, our, our request? Um, whether or not we move forward or not, we, we want to know it, how we get this rubbish fund out of the negative or passive balance, and that's all I have, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any other discussion, don't go far when you don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Yeah, through you, to the, to the office, there's no name answer.
Phil Moore.
Phil Moore. Phil Moore, that's the one. I don't know how this broke from tonight, but I do know that I'm opposed to keep it in, to let that post coming to the committee. And that means when it comes back to the committee, I don't, every time I want some detailed information, okay? Because when I looked at it, this is like a four or five year extension, for the waste contract without the competitive bidding. And forty-six million or so, or whatever that is, is more than the original contract, if I read everything right. So this is a major move that we're being asked to do when it comes to the waste contract. And if I'm gonna do a five year extension, I don't want to talk, maybe just to represent it to the majority. So if I'm talking to you, Mr. Edward, today, by the hearing, what I want to say to you is, for me, it's gonna be best that y'all be prepared to really discuss these details and rationale, once we get to the committee meeting, if it makes it back. If it don't, make it to committee meeting with this group here, vote for both of them, it might just fail logic out. I don't know that to be true, we'll take it a step at a time, so watch this vote very close, I want you to stand by that for us. And then, if it passes, but staying with me, our next committee meeting, I want you to be prepared to give us some details and rationale, particularly me, I think you be prepared by the other, but, uh, that's where I'm at with it. I looked at it in my office and I'm like, they ran this, and I was watching to see how prepared of, this is a major replacement, would you agree?
I, I, I believe I understand your request, is you want a, a five year plan for how this is gonna impact the budget, it must be, uh, on balance, we're being stated in the final year.
Well, if you look at it close, one of the things it's saying is that if we provide these bins and stuff, we need this in order to do that. It's kind of mixing and providing bins, and I might that's really down, small potatoes, you know, I need a boat for extensions, because you need this right now to be to provide bins, you know? And then the other thing is, you know, a three percent increase, maybe down the road, but all that, but, you know, we might get a better deal back than we do, or we might run it in house, we need to talk, thank you so much.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rockwell, to send this to, back to finance committee. This first, yes. Mrs. Chen? Yes? Mr. Viper?
Yes.
Mr. Mays?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is six yes, zero no, that will be on the next finance committee agenda. The next resolution is two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one, Mr. Viper, that was your resolution, your separation, would you like to make comments? Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Go ahead.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, two, two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one, in finance.
There's a motion on the floor to keep two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one in finance, is there support? It's been moved and properly seconded to leave it in finance, is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
I know that this would refer to finance through you, to, Miss Green. Glad to ask you, whoever can answer, I asked for some specifics, and one of them was to quit properly with these designated, what, what any bidding process of people who are doing work, it's same, but she doesn't have any of that company like that. This green. Not a little bit.
Uh, no, it's not that they had to be on their own, uh, so I don't know if they go through yet, but they, we're gonna need them on that.
Yeah, I want to support it, but I want to be careful, I hope this.
Pointing information.
Which point?
Um, to, through you to the speaker, uh, Mr. Mays, they did recently experience a death on their board, which is why she was not able to be here tonight.
What?
They just experienced a death on their board, and so that's why.
Yeah, yeah.
On their board, on the board, who was shooting the, so that's why she's not here tonight to provide the information.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry, I don't know what you said, I'm just, okay, you said your area, and you made your motion to postpone it. Um, I just thought I articulated some of the things I'm thinking for, but I haven't said it out, so forth and right, um, so forth and so on. Um, some decisions, I'm gonna get there, okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? Seeing none, Rockwell, please, to keep resolution two-three-zero, two-five-two-point-one in finance, I mean in finance.
Yes.
Mr. Viper?
No.
Yeah.
Presley? Yes. This one's your card?
Yes.
Presley, yes. The vote is five yes, one no, that will stay in finance. The next resolution is two-three-zero, two-eight, one-point-one, Mr. Mays, that was your separation, do you have a motion?
Yeah, Madam Chair, um, this is the main doubt of mothers in infants, I'm gonna make a motion, like, discuss, I'm gonna make a motion to move it to, uh... I'm gonna make a motion to move it to council for special affairs under the date, which one? Um, after the discretion.
Mr. Mays, we do need to say.
Yeah, I'm on, on the, the council, so.
Mr. Mays. I was gonna say, could you be specific? I was going to say, could you be specific?
Yeah, I'm talking, I'm like.
Okay.
Come on, come on.
I'm going to make a motion to move it to, right now, to special affairs.
Okay. There's a motion on the floor to move resolution two-three-zero-two-eight-one-point-one to special affairs. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and seconded to move it to special affairs. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Mays.
Let me get five minutes.
Just referring to committee? So you get one round of ready votes?
Well, these, these groups have to get fixed. And so, maybe, certainly we will. But that's why I'm talking to Mr. Presley. But these, and those are pretty smooth today. That's trying to keep it that way. Do you, Madam Chair, to, Ms. Green, and, actually, you and I learned actually, as you know, but I miss this a million dollars of private fund money. And I've read the details that it relates to, the dispersed of this body. This money is going to so many homes with pregnant women here in the city of Flint, or, I know they're doing a broader program, but this money be mixed in the broader program specifically to Flint, I told them. Who know them?
Moment three.
Yeah, yeah.
Are you aware that it's four residents in the city?
Yeah, I'm aware, but I want to hear on the record, because when you read the summary, it's a broader program in Florida, it's linked. And I want to introduce me going in the pot on the broader program, but would the media go specifically to Flint, right?
It's supposed to go into, and, uh.
Say what again?
I'm tired. It goes a long time with the rest of the money, and it's supposed to be for the city.
I don't know what you said.
Yes, it's supposed to be for the city, the city of Flint.
Specifically to the city of Flint. And it said something also about five hundred dollars a month. Am I reading that right?
Uh, yeah, yes, I think it's for mothers who are pregnant and mothers who have just had. He is, I don't know what age, but he goes to.
That's a five hundred dollars a month, but twelve months that I think I'm ready to read without the progressive number and looking at it, if that's a state of stress and to do what they want to with that five hundred. Actually, you said it, you did it, yeah. Well, then, once they get the five hundred, there's no strength of that. It's not specific to the child there or pregnancy, it's just could be for anything.
So they need to talk, John's book.
And who would be the person to give the award, profess yourself as a Michigan State?
I'm tired of that, I'm fed up with that.
It looked like this was going through Michigan State. I'm sorry, I want to support it, but who is the person from Michigan State? Can we ever be?
Mona.
Asking questions.
Mona Tish.
Dr. Mona.
Right.
Dr. Mona Tish.
That you be the gentleman.
Well, no, they missed it. They missed the important.
Well, wait a minute, Kim. Let's talk.
Uh, Mr. Man, Councilman May, she, she has come the last couple of times. We just weren't able to get to her, but she is willing to.
Did we get to, we didn't get to?
No, but she is willing to come.
So that's what the problem was with all that mess and chaos. They were here, but today they're not here. Let's see if our special affairs, um, they can be here. Um, hopefully it'll go right. If I'm just caught to my attention, if you see them, um, following with my attention, so I can try to make sure they're here. Um, that, I appreciate that information. That makes sense to me. I didn't want to choose some of that stuff. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion in the first round? Excuse me, I'm one out. Any other discussion? Any other discussion? I'm at my, I'll have my say again. Um, I am totally against this resolution because I believe that it is representing guaranteed income. And I'm not in favor of that. It serves my conservative values to no end. And I've had even discussions with members of council outside of this room regarding my dealings. I'm a very definite hard no. I know that this will pass.
Request that from me.
Though I've been, Mr. May.
You want to keep it in committee?
I don't want it passed at all. I want, I want to take it indefinitely. But, um, I know that the will of the body is not that. Which is why I didn't make the motion. So, um, I've been a hard no since the first time I heard about it. Sure, is it lawful? Absolutely. Is it physically responsible? No. This is a million dollars of ARCA dollars that could go to repair homes. You know, people want to know where, we want sixteen million additional ARCA dollars. We spend it on this, the money may or may not do any good, but in my opinion, remembering from when I was a child, and welfare moms got more money for each children, and this is guaranteed income for the child. So the moms giving that? I am against it. And I would rather see that million dollars go to a roof to keep that child or, or elderly person safe and dry and warm. There are a lot of programs out there. There is WIC. That's just one. WIC is a lot of money. And I'm also a breastfeeding advocate. That's free. People seem to think, oh, that's just a form, like, because it's kids. If, if you need the money to support a child with this or to do, to do this program, use your boobs. Be them. It's free.
Requesting.
Go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Are you worried about that bottom end, you can't produce?
Very few of us have that issue. As my mother was a life baby specialist at Hurley and the Newbury Street, she taught all of us how to breastfeed. So, I'm saying, this is my piece. I'm saying it out loud. It's, I don't care. I, I'm a hard no. There are other programs out there. We don't need to spend a million dollars of our ARCA dollars for this program.
Requesting.
What's your request?
Are you too aware that there's other programs for each as well?
Absolutely. Absolutely. But I'd rather spend our ARCA dollars on, on the roof issue. Everybody wants sixteen more million dollars? Put that into the roof. You only need fifteen more. Tell me where you're going to find it. Thank you. Second, um, you're going to put vote now. Yes, I was. Um, and this is, um, oh, well, send it to special affairs.
I'm going to stand right now. I change it, but I'm going to stand for some additional conversation. Interesting. So put right now.
Yes.
No. Yes.
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 Madam Chair.
What is, yes, Mr. Mays?
I'm going to stand, I'm standing through this.
What is?
The vote is six yes, one no. That will go to special affairs. The next resolution is two-three-zero-three-zero-two. Mr. Mays, that was your separation.
Yeah, Madam Chair, I would make a motion to move this to council.
Okay, there's a motion on the floor to send two-three-zero-three-zero-two to council. Is there support, Madam Chair?
Yes, I support.
Is the motion properly seconded by Ms. Barnes to send it to council? Is there any discussion?
Yeah, Madam Chair.
Mr. Mays.
Through you, Mr. Edwards.
Mr. Edwards?
I mean, they talked a good time. I gave five minutes.
This is, if I'm wrong, you did a lot of progress, don't waste, I'm being correct. I know the purposes and purposes that I'm reading here about in the last week or so, they never had to do with water. That was just the wastewater project.
No, just wastewater.
Okay. Did I ask for an update on the wastewater and water projects you regarded?
They have been concerned.
Okay, I think that is, but I want to make it clear. I want an update on the water upgrades and projects. Just like that, Mr. George Trump stated, this is staying going to number three. When will that be completed?
It's hard to say right now. There's a, there is a issue that is, in fact, I got a call to that situation. There's an issue being resolved, stabilizing, I mean, uh, one of the pumps. In fact, what they're doing is they're trying to determine, the pumps are on platforms, and the pumps is, is rotating at a way that's causing a disturbance with the platform. And so, they're trying to, right now, they're in the process of determining a ample fix to stabilize this platform so they can do it across all four motors. So that's, yeah, and right now, it is about finding a fix for the one, then completing that fix on all four of the motors to make sure they're, they're stable. And these are huge motors, we're making eight thousand RPM.
When I read the documentation that came with this resolution, it was talking about after inspection, they seen that they needed this, 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 and this, and that, the fact that you tell it now.
It, it, it borders on it, yeah. They, they do talk about this piece in here where it talks about an ultrasonic clamp and things of that nature. These are things that are precursors to what I'm talking about. So this, this, what's going on here borders on the fact that they need to stabilize these motors.
So we might get a change or the number four, what's the point?
Yeah, that very well could happen.
If this one is thirty thousand, we don't know what that would be.
No, because we don't know, that's just, as I explained it, we don't know all the fixes that need to take place for all of the motors together.
So I don't know about it, but I'm working, what we keep doing to these people, these deals, if they got into deals and they keep coming back to change orders. So, this is not calculated right.
Um, this was not, coming to your point of, you know, the situation was not anticipated. What's happening with the motors and the, the shafts that drive, that the motors drive? This was unanticipated, the second.
When, when did these first plan to do all of the upgrades on the water system? Do you know what year that planned thing, this one talks about something two thousand twenty-one, but I think it's a ten years, uh, since, I think over two thirteen. Do you have any documentation when we had did the overall first plan to be upgraded on the water system?
Yes.
Right, when you was that year?
Twenty eighteen.
With y'all in office then?
No.
That's what I'm getting at. I'm getting at the politics of it, because I've been listening to the people. And I'm knowing when these upgrades and stuff came, and I know when we voted and did it. You know, I keep hearing, "Man, you're a fantastic guy, and Frank Trump," you know? I just want people to tell the truth, and see, I'm giving updates on all the stuff that we had agreed on from eighteen to now. Tell me where we at? And when can I expect this update?
I should, I would say this, uh, if I may, that it was, the, the process has gone through uh, quite a few different transitions. So to your point, uh, it started in one place, but the actual, some of the actual upgrades have occurred since we've been here.
And some have changed, you know, we averaged it by a different, but can you give me an update from two eighteen to where we at now, what's expected to be done?
Yes, I can, I can relate.
Thanks, committee.
Yes.
Thank you.
Uh, if I, did I add today?
Oh, yeah, it's up to you. If not, just hang around, I got five open.
Go ahead, Mr. Edwards.
Oh, I was just going to ask that, uh, if the clerk is sending that on to me, because it's part of the process that sometimes these things get lost, so if, if the clerk is sending that over. She has sent others over to me in email, so I appreciate it.
So I'm going to piggyback on that email that you sent that clerk to request the balance of the wind, I see that this is coming out of the wind farm, and I know that we've allocated a great portion of that to global for the water lines. Can we get a balancing worry to see where we're at? Because I know that the wind funds expired in a year with the, with the latest one that we got last year for renewal, right? Is that correct?
That is correct, and there's, you know, I can, I can, if you, if you'd like a roundabout number, I can give that to you.
Absolutely. No, absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, the roundabout number right now is that we're still probably sitting on about fifteen million.
After we've allocated the money to, for the water? So we, so you're saying we've got fifteen million potential, uh, um, what do you call those?
Projects?
No, are they fixed?
Service lines.
Service line replacements?
Uh, yeah, not the replacements.
Row restoration.
Restorations, sorry, I think, restorations.
Yes, I, I, I would say to you at this point is that that was probably, uh, was the best estimation in putting together that piece. That was overestimated. So I'm saying to you that, yes, right now, what's in there is approximately fifteen million that's still available. We have some outstanding invoices to pay. But to say that we'll use that by the end of the year would be a fallacy.
So you're saying we're going to have something that's going to go back to the state?
Well, it is our, not to the state, it would be going back to the federal level.
And there's no projects that we can allocate some of those money to?
Not in, not in the timeframe. There's no timeframe. There's no scenario possible between now.
Are we going to ask for another extension?
There are talks underway. We have not been, we have not been granted anything, so I want to be cautious to say that. But there are talks underway.
I would hate for these two thousand-plus restorations, now we have a lot of pockets because we let funds expire. Oh, that would have to be a good thing.
The restorations are on schedule, so I, I will tell you that. Right now, the restorations.
They would be on schedule and completed before the asphalt, the concrete planes close?
The November first, the, the November first was the projected time period, uh, that we'll lose. We'll lose the, the, uh, ability to do, uh, the paving and, and, and the asphalt and, and the concrete. Because, so right now, the pace is good.
Mr. Edwards, I'm still seeing a ton of, um, rocks on the ground where they need, where they need a place that, you know, yards tore up. Um, can, can we do a special order or something for maybe the next meeting where, um, they come in and give us an update on, on whether they have been raining and could potentially be in jeopardy?
Yeah.
Can we request that, Madam Chair? I don't know if that's the contractor or the project grantor firm that we hired. Could somebody give us some kind of update to me? Where we're at with that. We haven't had an update on service lines or reparations probably since we improved global.
Well, engineering should be.
Well, and it certainly, we certainly haven't had an update since Mr. Brown retired. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Requesting.
What's your request?
Through you, Mr. Edwards, did you request that the chair coordinate with assets that you know the things, again?
Well, I want the clerk to, to make sure that it's, uh, I don't want to put it on the agenda if they can't make sure of it. So, maybe if the clerk can get with them, and you get with Row and Global, and then we can do an offline to, do a special order. Maybe next finance meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Wendy Carter.
Yes, um, Mr. Edwards, and I just want to piggyback off, um, what a councilman was like with that, for example. The number that is provided for residents to call, um, it's kind of like an answering machine. I'm just wondering, are they, um, getting the messages off of this voicemail? And are they putting these addresses on a list? Because I've called in several. And I've never received a return call from Rock. We need to know what's going on. I mean, residents are calling.
One of the questions.
I have an email address that you sent you.
My email address?
I emailed.
So are they, so. So are they, so are they returning emails? But they can't return the telephone call? I'm concerned. That's a problem, uh, for me. And it's a problem that no one is answering these calls. And we're paying Rock to do this project? You can't return calls, people, people wanna know what's going on. So, and I think it's a good idea to have them to come in and do a special order, because, you know, I get calls every day about, about restoration. And I give them the number, I also call myself, and then I give the resident the number for them to also call, and put their address to this, um, voicemail or answering machine, whatever it is. Um, but no return calls. But I, I, uh, if you can email.
I'll email that.
That, that email address.
Okay, I'll email it. I'll email it to her.
Okay, so it's like, through you, Madam Chair, to Miss Burns, is that the way that you've been communicating with Rock?
Um, I have been communicating and working back with Ashley contacting, emailing to that, 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 uh, that out, and I've also had residents send it to, I was in our, I'm seeing, and I've also sent it to Melissa May.
Okay.
Phone number, um, if, if your handle tell you it's not available.
Okay, because I can't see where the work is being done, I can't see, um, you're saying that the work is almost complete, no, it's not. It's just simply not almost complete. You got, you got homes over in University Park that probably, they never should have been, uh, their pipes shouldn't have been, uh, looked at. Because we already know that the University Park, um, the, the new homes in Smith Village, they do not have led or galvanized, um, house. But you have several homes in University Park, um, that needs restoration. There are several, um, homes in my area that needs restoration. I got a lady, uh, Nell King, her driveway. For almost two years now. So, you can't stand there and tell them that the work is nearly complete, what did they say, eighty percent, ninety percent complete? No, no. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, any other discussion, Madam Chair?
She said, it's time, go. Hey, get in the mic, can't get.
You're stating to have the role along with Global, okay, and, so that is what, um, we do need an update, because I know for fact we're not able to just be our fourth deadline, as that progress that right? We've missed, I think, three, so we now are, what's our new deadline, our fourth deadline?
I, I don't know, we didn't have a deadline for, an actual deadline that was announced for, for restoration.
Because I think we're still away here, we're still away with Judge Lawson, um, his comments, I mean, we're gonna be charged five hundred dollars a day for not having this completed, is that right?